Good morning and thank you to council members Lavange, Weiss, and Zine. If we could ask other council members to please join us. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for June 20, 2007. We are here in the John Favreau Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, L.A. City View, where we are broadcast live during each meeting, and we are rebroadcast in the evening as well. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I am joined by my colleagues, Council Member Tom Lavange, Jack Weiss, and Dennis Zine. There are four members currently here of our 15. We need 10 members or two-thirds to constitute a quorum and to begin business. So let me begin by, please, asking council members to join us. We have two, three council members who are excused today, Council Member Alarcon, Council Member Cardenas, and Council Member Wesson. But Ms. Gruel, if you will please join us, Ms. Hahn, if you will join us, Mr. Weezer, if you will please come down, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry is excused until 11:00. Mr. Reyes, if you'll please make your way down, Mr. Rose, oh, Mr. Reyes is here, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Smith, if you will please join us as well. We will begin as soon as we have 10 members. As mentioned, we're broadcast live on Channel 35, but we are also available via the World Wide Web at lacity.org, where you can click on the links and catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. You can also pull down past council meeting items through Video on Demand feature, which we have recently added, ensuring that you can catch a council meeting after it has occurred or going back in time to visit any council actions. Lastly, you can listen via audio through your telephone by calling City Phone, which is a service of the city, to allow you to listen in on the city council meetings or any of our committee hearings, and that number is (213) 621-CITY. We also invite members of the public to give testimony on items that are under our jurisdiction. Those are available through our agendas, which are online, and also at the City Clerk's Office, as well as here in council chambers. Through our agendas, you can look at items which we have not yet had a public hearing. If they have not yet had a public hearing, we invite you to fill out a card in the back and give that to one of our Sergeants at Arms, and we'll make sure we hear from you on any of those items. Every item will hear from the public either in council committee or here in full council. And lastly, if you want to testify on items that are not under, not on the agenda but nevertheless are under our jurisdiction, that's called general public comment, and feel free to fill out a card in the back and give that also to Sergeant at Arms as well. If you live closer to Van Nuys, we meet there the first Friday of the month, but we're also available through our council chambers in Van Nuys to hear your public testimony. And finally, we have council ambassadors in the back, local high school students, and folks who are interning with us to be able to explain any of the ins and outs. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them or one of our Sergeants at Arms for assistance. Again, thank you to the council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time, Council Member Lavange, Council Member Reyes, Council Member Weiss, and Council Member Zine. We are waiting five more members, specifically Council Member Gruel, if you will join us, Council Member Hahn, if you will make your way down, Council Member Weezer, if you will make your way to chambers, Council Member Parks, Council Member Rosendahl, and Council Member Smith. We look forward to seeing you soon, and thank you to members of the public for your patience. We are now at six members. We need four more. Council Member Rosendahl, thank you for being here. We need three more, specifically Council Members Parks, Weezer, Hahn, and Gruel. If you will make your way down as soon as possible, thank you. Thank you again to the council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. This is a final quorum call. We are one member short of a quorum. Thank you to council members Gruel, Lavange, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine for being here. We are expecting Council Member Hahn and Council Member Weezer and Council Member Parks. If you could please make your way down as soon as possible. Council Member Hahn, Council Member Weezer, and Council Member Parks. We are waiting your presence here in city council chambers to begin our meeting. If we do not achieve a quorum in the next few minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Hahn for joining us. I think we have lost Mr. Weiss now. If Mr. Weiss can join us, Mr. Parks, Mr. Weezer, all right, we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hold on one second.
Technical difficulties. Can we call the roll? Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine. We have 10 members present and a quorum. First order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds. There's no objection. Those will be unanimously approved. Next order of business, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments at this time?
Let's run through the agenda real quick, and then we'll come back for public comment. First items.
Items 1 through 16 are items known as for public hearings. Items 1 through 11 are hearings for street lighting districts.
Okay, we do not have any cards on that, so we will open and close the public hearings for those items. Council members, any specials? We are items 1 through 16. That's items 1 through 16. Any specials? Going once.
Need special since I don't have any of mine pulled yet, and I'll derive from them. Sorry, Mr. President.
You want to wait on all of them, Mr. Lavange?
Yeah, go the next.
Okay, let's go to the next section, please. Item 17.
Next section is item 17 through 32 on the regular agenda, and item 56 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, colleagues, let's hold 17 on the table. That's a commissioner appointment. Yes, Ms. Perry.
Item 22 special.
22 for Ms. Perry. Mr. Parks?
Ask that we have 18 special, and if we can hold 23 and 31 till we get the committee reports.
23 and 31 and 18 for Mr. Parks.
And also 20, if we can have 20 continued to the 27th.
Till the 27th of June?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no objection, item number 20 will be continued to the 27th of this month, June. Okay? Any other specials? Ms. Hahn? I'm sorry?
22?
22?
32.
32, sorry. 32 for Ms. Hahn. Any other specials, colleagues? Let's hold the ordinance. 31 we have called special for Mr. Parks right now.
You want 31 continued till Friday by the councilman of the district. Is that okay? That's the children's museum?
Is there any objection to continuing that till Friday, sir?
No objection from Mr. Parks. 31 continued to Friday.
All right, that'll be continued till Friday. Item number 31.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Any other specials? Mr. Zine, does he have a special?
On the next side, okay.
26, we'll call special for Mr. Weezer. And any, if no other specials, let's again hold 19 on the desk as an ordinance, see if we can get 12 members here. On the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. 16?
Is okay. I read my notes.
Okay. Let's take up 1 through 16, then. That's the biggest block ever called special. Congratulations. That's good. Mr. Holden, I think, used to call all prime numbers special, but that was different. Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on 1 through 16. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
God bless Nate Holden.
God bless Nate Holden. He's still here, don't worry. Next items, please.
Next are items number 33 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll hold 33 through 40 special for 12 members. Mr. Zine?
54.
46 and 54, we're not quite a 54, but I will keep that in mind when we get there for Mr. Zine. Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Lavange.
42.
42 for Ms. Hahn, Mr. Lavange.
50, please.
50? Let's go ahead and include all the items. We now have 12 members, so we can take up 33 through 40 as well. Any other specials? We have 42, 46, and 50. All the rest we can vote on. Let's go ahead then and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Yeah, Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask of 47. If we just refer that to committee, because we have, we had a hearing on that on Monday.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconsider item 47, please.
And if you could also reconsider 48, so we can call that special, Mr. President.
48, okay. Go ahead, let's open the roll in reconsidering 47, 48. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Without objection, 47 is for Budget and Finance, Mr. Parks? Okay, no objection, we'll send that to Budget and Finance, and 48 we'll call special for Mr. Weiss. Mr. Lavange?
This is item 56. Did we get there yet?
Not quite yet. We're almost there. Next two items.
Next two items are 52, 53, and they are closed session items. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold the closed session items on the desk. If we can, it's now past 10:15. If you can call, if we can recess this for a moment and call the roll for this special meeting.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, anybody wishing to call special 54 or 55? 54 was Mr. Zine, that's correct, and we'll hold 55 as a closed session item for the closed session. And let's go ahead and continue that into the regular agenda, regular meeting, excuse me. And that leaves us with one more item, I believe. All right? Item 56?
56.
And Mr. All right, is anybody here from Rackham Parks for 56? Do we have anybody here?
Can I continue it again?
We can continue it again, or we can put a phone call in and see if we can get somebody done.
Continue it to next week.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue item 56 one week to the 27th. Okay? Thank you. All right, we'll come back now to public comment. And like to call forward first Arnold Sacks will be our first speaker for public comment here in council chambers. After that will be Chuck Tenen, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys for Sharon Brewer. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. Again, not to reiterate the point, but I'm gonna anyway, MTA and their construction authorities, I've been up in front of you several weeks in a row talking about this item, and last week, I believe, Mr. President, you explained that the construction authorities are part of a, I have a brain cramp right now, because it's more than one community. The rail lines run through more than one community. So my question to the council members then is, with the Expo Line Construction Authority being formed by the state, why is there no Culver City Construction Authority as that's a community outside the boundaries of L.A.? And again, with the Green Line extension to the airport, since that all falls within L.A., the city of L.A., why is a construction authority necessary? The MTA is having their budgetary hearings next week, I believe, and some of these questions should be, should be addressed because they're raising the rates. They've already voted on that, and they claim they don't have the revenue to run their operations. And my claim is that nobody knows where the revenue is being spent on. I think this is important for your constituents to hear, and I think it's important for you to step up to the plate to voice your constituents' concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, and appreciate those questions. I know my deputy, Jane Berner, my transportation deputy, spent some time with you explaining those authorities, but she's available for any other further questions you have if we can be helpful. Our next speaker is Chuck Tenen.
Good morning, council members, President Garcetti, Chuck Tenen. Recently, after 30 years, I was forced out of my home at 11927 Magnolia Boulevard, Number 3, in Valley Village, CD2, due to demolition of about eight buildings, which I found out now that the demolition in our building has been postponed for months, and people have moved into the building to watch it. As a senior, disabled, and low-income, the stress has affected my health significantly. After 40 years, you can't know what it feels like. Recently, I applied to the LAHD for first-time homebuyer purchase assistance program because I found a place to make a new home. I qualified for this program for affordable housing. They ran out of money. In April, they were given $6 million, and in May, it was all gone, and many people like me won't get a new place to live. There's 112 people on the waiting list there that are not going to get it because they have no money. I'm here today because of motion 071887 for $3 million to the LAHD to help myself and 112 others on a waiting list and other people trying to get affordable housing. I know this city and the city council care about people who need affordable housing. Thanks to Councilman Herb Wesson and Tony Cardenas, they introduced this motion to keep this program alive. I urge you to vote for this today so people can get into affordable housing that don't have it, and this program doesn't die. So put your heart where your vote is, in affordable housing. I know you people care, and you care about a lot of people that need it. This program needs to go on. They need that money there because they don't have it, and a lot of people are being hurt by that. If the program is to help affordable housing and help people like myself, then where did $6 million go in one month? Now there's an opportunity they can to help all these people on this waiting list like myself get something. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenen. Next, we'll go to Van Nuys, and we will hear from Sharon Brewer. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Good morning. Sharon Brewer, this is about the Encino Neighbor Council election, June 28, 2007, now only eight days away. As of this morning, I have still not received a response from Dunn regarding the public record request for Encino's 2007 Dunn-approved election procedures and the reason for delaying the request. The email was sent on Monday, June 18. I also haven't gotten a response from Carol Thorpe with, from an email dated June 18, where the title was, the subject was "Update: Urgent Encino NC 62807 Election Need to Postpone", email 52907. In it, I went and I said that I have not received any written communications from you or any other Dunn staff regarding the postponement of Encino's 62807 election, at that time only 10 days away. I told you in my email dated 6608 and resent on 6807, oops, wrong date, unscheduled 6107 meeting with Tom Soon, that Tom provided no information to me that the meeting was, and Tom, that Tom provided no information to me and that the meeting that we had was a waste of my time. How can a person that wants a meeting to discuss specific questions asked of Dunn come with no information to offer? Why hasn't anyone addressed my concerns about this election? What is the status of Encino's 62807 election? If it is going forward, please explain in detail why it is okay to go forward with the election after the concerns I have raised regarding the ENC Dunn-approved election procedures and that the ENC election procedures were not in compliance with the NC procedures approved by L.A. City Council 12505 in my email to you on 52907. There also has been no ENC outreach regarding the ENC election mailing since April 25 of '07, which was a Dunn printing with incorrect information, date regarding when candidate forms had to be returned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Richard Hilton here in council chambers. Richard Hilton?
Good morning, Mr. Hilton. I held a press conference yesterday, oh, by the way, how much time do I have? Two minutes? Press conference yesterday to save the oldest house in Van Nuys. I've been talking to Councilman Cardenas's office actually for months, but most directly about a week and a half ago intensely, with both previous and present aides. I basically feel I've been given the sort of runaround by the office, not responding to whether the councilman was going to intervene for the developer to knock this down, which I heard was going to happen tomorrow. So not getting a response, we were forced to hold a press conference, and the result was several press conferences. I came down here today as a last-ditch effort, possibly to appeal to the council, to apply Rule 23 if possible, which Council Member Wendy Gruel did on the Weather Wall Castle, I think, about a year ago. That was my intention today. I drove by the property this morning, and of course, the developer knocked it down, partly because he was contacted by office staff a couple of days ago. I have been giving several attempts to contact staff and have not heard a thing from them since Monday night. The system is flawed. The early notification system is available to a developer to knock this stuff down. The Office of Historic Resources and the Cultural Heritage Commission have been fantastic. I was three weeks away from nominating this as a cultural historic monument. They've been fantastic, and I'm very disappointed in the councilman's office and the fact that no intervention was taken. This is a perfect example. You don't contact the developer. Our press conference was, like I say, was a last-ditch effort, and unfortunately, my intention here today is now moot. Please, folks, let's save these things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilton. We appreciate it. That is our final public comment. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl to say something about an item that we voted on. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was item 29 that we, as a council, approved earlier in this moment. It gives us comfort to our Westchester and Playa del Rey residents that we are going to do a very significant safety study about the northern runway. We're going to bring the best and the brightest. We encourage BoAC, that is the airport commission, to do a first-class study analysis of safety issues, maybe bring in NASA, maybe bring in RAND, but do something that takes a good period of analysis. And once that safety study is done, then go into the two-year program that would be an EIR. And I just want to thank the Westchester community. I was three weeks away from nominating this as a cultural historic monument. They've been fantastic, and I'm very disappointed in the councilman's office and the fact that no intervention was taken. This is a perfect example, you don't contact the developer. Our press conference was, like I say, was a last-ditch effort, and unfortunately, my intention here today is now moot. Please, folks, let's save these things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilton. We appreciate it. That is our final public comment. Like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl to say something about an item that you voted on. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. It was item 29 that we as a council approved earlier in this moment. It gives us and comfort to our Westchester and Playa del Rey residents that we are going to do a very significant safety study about the northern runway. We're going to bring the best and the brightest. We encourage BoAC, that is the Airport Commission, to do a first-class study analysis of safety issues, maybe bring in NASA, maybe bring in RAND, but do something that takes a good period of analysis. And once that safety study is done, then go into the two-year program that would be an EIR. And I just want to thank the Westchester community for the town hall. I want to thank Gina Marie Lindsay from the department. I want to thank Alan Rothenberg from the commission. And everybody came to a consensus that safety is our number-one concern, Mr. President, at the airport, and with that safety study first, then we can go forward with the others. So thank you, colleagues, for your support on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have 19 that was held just for 12 members. If we could take that up next? Nobody wishes to be heard on it? Let's open the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, and if there's no objection, we'll also send 45 forthwith. And with that, Mr. Labange has asked for item number 50. Out of order, if there's no objection, we'll take item number 50. Okay?
Mr....
Yes?
President members, good morning. This is a very important item here. If we could roll up there on item number 50, and I don't want to break any protocol, so I want Mr. Rosendahl to stand at the podium, and maybe Ms. Gruel could stand at the podium, and you could take these very special resolutions that I'm going to come over and honor somebody as well.
Go ahead.
Is it okay? Come on. Thank you, members, and Mr. President. This morning, I was out at the Autry National Center where we kicked off an issue about the wildlife and watershed council, and there was a citizen there who I spoke of who started a lot of that movement. And it's interesting today, as things happen in a day, you come back and then you're honoring someone who contributed greatly to AIDS awareness by being named as the first AIDS coordinator by the city of Los Angeles. Fern Egan right here, let's give him a big hand right here on this day here. Look around all those people. And Steve Simon, come join me right here if you would, please, because we're kicking off an event here, but I wanted to honor you first, along with Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Gruel and all the members of council, including our very own mayor and city controller and city attorney, because when the first person organizes an effort to make a difference in this city and does a great job, turn around, look again at all those great friends who came down here, fought the traffic to come and honor you. This is very special. During Fern's time, the first his tenure, the scope and visibility of this office of AIDS coordinator for Los Angeles was greatly expanded throughout the city and AIDS awareness. And I remember in the beginning days when there were so many challenges that people thought if you touched somebody or hugged somebody, you'd get in trouble.
You might still get in trouble.
You still might get in trouble, that's right, yeah, that's right. But you understand what I'm saying, but that awareness was brought up where people understood about this very terrible disease. Fred was instrumental in the development of the city's HIV prevention program, including the establishment of the syringe exchange program, which has curbed the spread of HIV throughout Los Angeles. He has dedicated his life to enhancing the quality of life for people living with HIV and AIDS, and for his tenure as the executive director of Being Alive, his work of Act Up LA, his tenure as AIDS coordinator, to the current internet blog following his life as a person living with AIDS, he is certainly to be commended. Fern Egan continues to be respected leader in the AIDS community, in the Los Angeles community, and here in the John F. R. chambers, you look at the love that is around me, you're truly a respected man. Now therefore, be it resolved by adoption of this resolution, the mayor of the great city of Los Angeles, along with the city attorney, the city controller, and all of the city council hereby honor Fern Egan for his leadership in educating individuals about AIDS and HIV in the city of Los Angeles, and in honor, urge all of our diverse community in Los Angeles to the betterment to understand HIV transmission and access the risk for AIDS infection and get tested for HIV. I am, as chairman of the Arson Health Committee, hereby joined by members to formally present this great resolution with the great seal of the city of Los Angeles. As we go forward, I want to call somebody who's very special to us all and what is great about... And I haven't... And members, have you ever seen a pack of love around anybody at this podium like you see right now? Give yourselves a big hand coming down here. I want to call on Bill Rosendahl, very much a passionate member of city council to speak at this moment. Bill Rosendahl.
It's a very serious and very emotional and a very gratifying and a beautiful moment for all of us to be here. Many of you know that in 1995, I lost my partner, Christopher Lee Blaueman, to AIDS. Many of us lost our friends and our relatives. From about mid-1985 to mid-2000... 1985 to 1995, that 10-year period, tens of thousands of Los Angelinos died to AIDS. In the early days of AIDS, it was gayness and AIDS, and people died. It had one silver lining, and that was family and friends began to realize that gay people are everywhere. Parents were told, brothers were told, fathers were told, and that became a positive part of it, because when we were able to say that we know somebody that is gay, and it's my brother, it's my father, it's my uncle, it became a revolutionary thing, that gay people were dying. It was a dark secret for many years, the suffering was unparalleled. I still cry over all the friends I've lost. And when this great city stepped forward and put Fern in that position, an example of a person who believes that we should be treated with respect and dignity, that we should have the health care provided, we should not be stigmatized, we should not be discriminated against, this gentleman that I'm holding in my arm right now was one of the true leaders of our great city, our county, our state, and our nation, and we are so honored to be able to stand here today to honor him and those behind me who have fought the battle, the battle for life and survival against the discrimination and the hatred and the suffering. Unfortunately, AIDS continues to spread. In this country, young kids are still dying of AIDS, and women of color are getting AIDS. And I must say, unfortunately, around the great world we live in, that AIDS prevention and the therapies have not been forthwith. 12 million people have died in sub-Saharan Africa. It is now spreading to India and to China. The world must be on notice that we cannot let this disease continue as rapidly as it is. But boy, the man that I'm holding in my arm is such a leader, and we are all blessed that he's standing here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thank you for your leadership in acknowledging Fern today. Many of you may recall, in 1985, the city and county of Los Angeles, particularly Supervisor Edelman and Mayor Bradley, started the first city-county AIDS commission, because at that time, the county refused to acknowledge that this was an issue that we needed to deal with, and that it was of such importance to have a commission that would begin to address so many issues of not only discrimination but health issues. And during that time period, there were individuals who stood up and who were part of the system to change the way we looked at the issue of AIDS, and Fern Egan was one of those individuals. I can't tell you how many countless conversations we had late into the night, on the weekends, where Fern was frustrated with the bureaucracy, frustrated with how we couldn't move things as fast as we needed to, because as Mr. Rosendahl mentioned, people were dying every single day. But Fern had that passion and that commitment, and I think one of those who would not take "no" for an answer. And our relationship spanned from both the time in the mayor's office to my time at the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which was one of the departments also addressing the issue of AIDS housing and how we could deal with individuals who had AIDS. We're happy that Fern, throughout this and struggling as a person with AIDS, was there from the heart, and you see so many people around him today. He is an individual who changed the face of how we as a city addressed the issue of AIDS. So there are countless people, Fern, that you may not know, all the people around you here know you, but there are people out there who benefited from what you did, benefited from you standing up and saying, "I'm going to address the issue of AIDS, and I'm going to provide the services and the advocacy to make sure that that happened." And so thank you to you, Fern, for what you have done here locally and nationally on this issue, and for people whose lives you changed, including mine as a friend of yours.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. I'm going to ask Regina Houston Swain, our general manager of the Office of Disability, who coordinates this, to say a few words.
Good morning. I've had the privilege of being a coworker of Fern Egan's, and today, it's a pleasure to welcome Mary Lucy, who... a former AIDS coordinator, and Steve Simon, the standing AIDS coordinator here today. Thank you, Fern, for being a pioneer in the field of AIDS education and prevention. Thank you very much.
Regina, thank you, and as I'm just going to pass the baton to Steve Simon, who's done such a great job as we continue with this very important tribute and also awareness.
Did you want to have Fern take your words first?
Yeah. I'm going to hold Steve. We're in Hollywood, we take two. Here we go right now for remarks. Fern, please welcome the man we honor today, Fern Egan.
Well, Mr. President, honorable members of the city council, comrades and friends, thanks for remembering my work as city AIDS coordinator from '91 to 2001. I'll take this honor in order to be able to honor the undermembers of my team at that well, who are Marlene Vallah, Jerry Davila, Mary Lucy, who was just mentioned, Tirdad Zangana, who is now the chief resident at University Hospital in Miami, Kadija Narula, and my bosses at that time, Steve Porter and Parker Anderson, and you, the city council are ultimately the bosses of... Well, you're the boss of me, among others. And I think that it's important to remember that in very different circumstances than obtained now, we were able to do some useful things for people with HIV and AIDS and for those at risk for infection with HIV. A few of them were hiring the first woman with AIDS on the job, supporting and then stabilizing the organization of Women Alive, one of the most important national voices of women, and supporting and making possible through practical and flexible harm reduction processes, a needle exchange, one of the very first that actually established itself in an official way, with an official relationship to the city of Los Angeles, and one in which I take great pride, and I hope that the city as a whole takes pride in the fact that we are able to act in a practical way to try to stop that practice that leads to so many deaths. We also sponsored seminal research on the first of the three big obstacles to a viable living with HIV that is still listed first among people with AIDS. They list in order, housing, then they list housing, and third, they list housing. And the fact is that despite controversy, we were able to fund research and to therefore foment changes in housing policy. That's several of the nights that Wendy Gruel was talking about, your council mirror. And because that program, which is still exists and is called Safe House, existed, there were no provisions for the drug-connected, the drug-dependent persons who we find in our midst as part of the population of people living with AIDS. There they have a safe and protected place where they can live their lives without the discrimination and stigmatization that was referred to earlier so clearly. Now, I just want to point out, because I'm famous for being long-winded, so I'll start apologizing now, all of these things could happen because of the progressive spirit that an independent AIDS coordinator with no vested interests could count on from the city council. We were free to innovate because we were not the recipients of large federal monies, which is always a necessary stance that makes this city, as opposed to other institutions, able to sponsor new research without the cumbersome processes that beset larger administrative units. And despite the rumors that I hear that there is flagging enthusiasm for expenditures on AIDS, and of course, what is increasingly and devastatingly clear to the young women and men who are supposedly serving the interests of this country overseas, because of that conjunction of circumstances which did not obtain during the high point of the epidemic in terms of its publicity, there is an inevitable tendency to move on to the next most popular issue. I urge that our AIDS program retain its vigor that comes from these special set of circumstances, the circumstances that exist now, the circumstances of war, the circumstances of much of the city that we care about the most, Los Angeles, being as if it were at war, even if it's not the streets of Baghdad. I think that we were not able under either those earlier set of political circumstances or the newer set of political circumstances to do all the things that this council and all the people with, living with HIV and AIDS, need to have done. That's obvious, glaringly obvious to far too many people, and I know that the city, I count on the city to maintain its commitment and to work to really move beyond things like the abstinence-only models that are foisted upon people who know far better what is important and appropriate for the lives of people with AIDS. I urge them to keep remembering that we are, among all the cities of the world, one of the most important destination cities for immigrants, and that immigration and the persons who come to this country under circumstances of economic need, political flight, or other circumstances, that they also retain, and that this council work as it has through resolution and other works, that the council worked to retain its support for all the persons with AIDS, regardless of citizenship, who cross the borderline to try to find an adequate life in this country. I think that's enough, because I don't want to apologize too many times for using your valuable time, but I am profoundly appreciative that you would remember the work of that period. I'm profoundly glad that Steve Simon has worked very tirelessly in a job that I'm not sure that I would recommend as a relaxation for any person, but he's struggled admirably with the job as we all have tried to when it was our turn to fill those shoes. And so I thank you all very much. This is an exciting visit for me, because I used to, of course, come here with people to confer, to receive the blessing of affirmation by the council through similar beautiful artwork, and it's nice to be back here for a day and remember those experiences. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. And... Thank you so much. Mr. President, if I could ask Steve Simon just to tie it all together, because we all support HIV counseling and testing days here in Los Angeles. Stephen?
Thank you, council member. Thank you for indulging us for this time. This is very important. As you've heard, the people behind and around me are some of the most incredible leaders in the world in the fight against HIV, and this city council is as well. LA has a historic leadership role in the fight against HIV and AIDS. The agendized item today is National HIV Testing Week. It's next week, the 25th to the 29th. It will be the most extensive testing day that the city of Los Angeles has been involved in ever. My office is working closely with the Office of AIDS Programs and Policy for the County of Los Angeles, and together, we're working with numerous community-based organizations to provide testing to over 1,500 people next week alone. This is part of a nationwide testing effort called the Mayor's Campaign Against HIV, coordinated by the National Association of People with AIDS. Mayor Villarrealco... Mayor Villarreal confirmed the city's participation and has secured over 500 free HIV tests to help us conduct the testing next week. These partnerships are key steps in us introducing the City of Los Angeles HIV Testing Initiative. It's a three-year pilot program significantly expanding testing and counseling that targets high-risk geographic areas across Los Angeles. The initiative is built on five core strategies. We will increase local implementation of the Centers for Disease Control recommendations that routine HIV testing be available through your family physician. We will increase testing at special community-based events in every single council district, at health fairs, festivals, sporting events, concerts, and at all 14 colleges and universities in Los Angeles. We will coordinate with local faith-based initiatives. We will increase public and private school testing, education, and awareness to protect our youth, and we will address the legislative and policy changes at the county, state, and federal level we need to expand HIV testing. Bottom line, how difficult is an HIV test, folks? Either you prick your finger and stick it on a little item and they can test you in 20 minutes, or you take a little oral swab, they put it on your top gum, on your bottom gum. A counselor will talk to you about some of the reasons you may be at risk, and again, in 20 minutes, you'll know your status. If you're negative, the counselor will talk to you about how to stay negative. If you're positive, they can get you directly into care and treatment. We need to tell the public to get HIV testing. It's that simple. Bottom line, we have received $100,000 to initiate this first phase of the testing initiative. We've partnered up with Minority AIDS Project, Planned Parenthood in Los Angeles, Drew University of Medicine and Science, and of course, Gilead Sciences were the benefactors and supporters for this first year. If Gilead folks would raise their hands, Minority AIDS Project. Planned Parenthood is here. This is an incredible and historic partnership. That said, together, here in Los Angeles, we're taking the first steps towards the largest and most successful testing initiative in the history of the U.S. And of course, we wouldn't be here without our prior leaders, who are still our leaders, like Ferd. So, thank you for your time and your commitment.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members, thank you very much for the time. I'm going to ask that our photographer shoot this great group shot right here. Everybody get around. A lot of love over here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Let's go ahead. We have a vote on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Next item, please. We'll send that forthwith. Mr. Reyes?
I wanted to, on behalf of Councilmember Weston, continue item 23 to June 29th.
Okay, Mr. Parks has called that special, so we'll get the staffs to talk about that. And meanwhile, we have a commissioner, item number 17. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Hahn for our reappointment of Douglas Kraus to the Harbor Commission. If we can ask Mr. Kraus to come forward, and as our chair of our Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee, we'll recognize Ms. Hahn. If you'd like, come forward to the table, please. Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we have before us Doug Kraus for a reappointment to the very important Harbor Commission, and we had a very good discussion in Commerce this morning, Councilmember Rosendahl and I, but maybe just for the sake of the council members and those who would be watching on Channel 35, you've been there two years. As I told you, I thought you were a very interesting appointment, because you have a financial background, and when you were appointed, I wasn't sure how much knowledge you actually had about our working port and how it fit in with the economy of Los Angeles, but maybe you could tell us, maybe what your accomplishments have been in two years, and then maybe what are some of the challenges that you face and you still think are out there for us at the Port of Los Angeles? Could you hold my time, please?
Sure. Absolutely. Our main focus the last couple of years really has been our Clean Air Action Plan and also bringing in kind of change agents, people and plans to get the port moving in different directions. It's been fascinating as a banker coming in, just the amount of money that the port has, that I think one of the challenges the next couple of years will be to use that prudently and look for ways to kind of help our local community, not just to, we have tons of resources there, and it's kind of, it is, as I think we've talked about, it's kind of sad to drive around Wilmington and San Pedro, seeing boarded-up stores and closed houses and so forth, yet when the port is sitting on these huge financial resources. So, a big emphasis the next couple of years will be on economic redevelopment and how to better use our resources.
Well, I think I'm just going to follow up a little bit on your comment about Wilmington and San Pedro and closed-up stores. One of the things that I've really been championing since I got elected was the development of the waterfront, both in Wilmington and San Pedro. It's a project that, well, in my opinion, will not only benefit Wilmington and San Pedro, but it will really benefit the city of Los Angeles, and we had an original analysis of building a first-class promenade waterfront in Wilmington and San Pedro, and we had an estimate that it would create like 19,000 jobs, and the kind of revenue that would come into a waterfront based on increase in tourism would really help us down here at City Hall, because we know that the tourism dollars actually are dollars that go into our general fund, and we can hire more cops, hire more firefighters, fix more streets. So, we think that project is something that ought to be moved. I expressed my frustration that I didn't think your commission was pushing hard enough to complete that waterfront development. So, I'd love to have you on record, give us your commitment or some challenges you think that are facing us in terms of completing that aggressive project. Call my time, please.
Yeah, I think that should be one of our big focuses for the next couple of years. The last couple of years, to be honest, we haven't ignored it, but we've been focusing on other things, and I absolutely think you're right, kind of the time is here. We have the, I think, the people down there, and we have the support in City Hall, and we have the financial resources to really look at that and decide what we're, you know, where we want to do. We have a lot of information right now. It's time to kind of put it together, move forward.
Good. We want to hear that. We really want you to push that, because we know if you don't push things, it doesn't get built, and particularly since the Port of Los Angeles' core mission has always been cargo, goods movement. We know that this is a little bit off in terms of what you usually do, but we think it's the right thing to do. You have the money to invest in that kind of infrastructure for a grand promenade along the main channel, so we really want you to do that. We know you've been focusing on the Clean Air Action Plan, which is historic, historic, that both ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles agreed on trying to reduce those emissions, but I'm concerned, you know, that that will really be implemented. I'm concerned that even with the Clean Air Action Plan, the growth in cargo and the growth in cargo-related pollution is something that we're not going to really get a handle on, and it will continue to contribute to premature deaths, missed school days, lost productivity in the workplace, congestion on our freeways. What is your perspective in how we really get a handle on keeping that economic engine, but, you know, not accounting for premature deaths in the state of California?
Well, I think your concerns are right. I mean, our Clean Air Action Plan is moving forward nicely, but it's just a plan, you know, until it's implemented, you know, we have all sorts of plans for all kinds of things. You know, I guess our governments are great planners, but to actually kind of implement it and actually push the plan forward is very important.
What role does the commission have in implementing that plan, or making sure that it is implemented?
I think it's really pushing the staff and keeping that on the agenda, keeping it front and center, making sure that that's going forward. I think some of it will depend on, we need to be a little more innovative in terms of, which we are doing, in terms of kind of looking for solutions ourselves, kind of trying out different technologies, funding this and that, and seeing what gels. I realize that there's a lot of concern and mistrust, and maybe it's a little bit like that Earl TV show, where you have this big list of bad things you've done in the past, and, you know, you want to make up for it, but people don't really know whether you are or not, but we are committed to that.
Because, again, I think you're right. It's a great plan, but unless it's implemented, we're still going to continue to see the kind of pollution that is deadly. I don't see my councilmember Greg Smith here, but Greg has, and I are, there is Greg. Greg and I are very excited about pushing the possibility of Maglev. We think Maglev for passengers and cargo is the kind of technology that is available today that will get us to the place where we can move cargo and not, you know, kill people with the pollution. Would really like to have the commission take a good, hard look at the feasibility of investing in a Maglev system that can move cargo from the harbor all the way out to the inland empire.
Yeah, we are looking at that. I agree with you absolutely on that. And again, no matter how clean the truck is, you know, you got to get them off the freeways at some point, and we need some sort of system like that.
Right. And the other thing I'd like to have you go on record is saying, I'd like you to take another look at my request, that the harbor invest $1 million in a feasibility study to connect the green line with a harbor line. In the harbor area, are very disconnected from public transit in Los Angeles. We know we have the blue line, and the gold line, and the red line, and the aqua line, and the expo line, but it makes sense to have a harbor line that comes right down from the green line, connects to the Port of Los Angeles, and then everyone who flies into LAX and is going on a cruise, hop on the green line, hop on the harbor line, and be put right at the San Pedro terminal. It's a, time has come. MTA doesn't feel like they're able to fund that kind of feasibility study, but as I told you, the nexus for me with the harbor is it makes sense to relieve our arteries of commuter traffic so that we can keep it open for moving the goods. So, I'd like you to take another look at that. Can I get your commitment to do that?
I will see if we look at that again.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you. Well, again, colleagues, I'm happy to recommend his reappointment. I think there's a lot of challenges ahead, but I think, if I can say anything to you today, Doug, is as the citizen commissioner, push, 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 push. Clean that port, green that port. I don't think we have to worry about growing the port, it's growing on its own, but then let's work on the infrastructure for goods movement, passenger movement, so we can make the whole area more livable around the Port of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really amazing things about this job. We can go from a very emotional, absolutely devastating AIDS issue, and wear our red ribbon, and in the next breath, get into the next discussion that's so positive. First, I want to thank you, Doug, for stepping back up to the plate, but just to echo Ms. Hahn, there's a lot of money there at that port that needs to be spread around properly for the quality of life in our region. First of all, a living wage needs to be for all the workers that interact with that port, considering how exciting that port is to the whole nation. Secondly, the transportation infrastructure to move those goods throughout this great nation needs to be part of how the profits of the port are spent. Indeed, I went to Shanghai with Mr. Smith. He urged me to go to look at Maglev, and then we went to Nagoya, Japan, and looked at the bullet train. I'm not wed to either one, the bullet train or Maglev, but I am to a high-speed rail that is clean, that takes the goods out of that port, instead of all these gas-guzzling trucks that we presently have on the 710. But let's look at infrastructure. Obviously, when Ms. Hahn said the green line, that's close to my heart. We want it into LAX, we want it down to Torrance and up to Santa Monica. We have no coastal relief west of the 405 in a mass transit, and we're fed up with the gridlock we're in. And of course, Wilmington and San Pedro, two jewels on the ocean, need to be getting some of that money for redevelopment and making that a place of destination as well. You being a financial wizard with David Friedman, visionary out of the box, and Dr. Geraldine Nash, the new port director, we have the critical mass of leadership that will move us forward in the right way. So, congratulations for stepping out, and we're going to put a motion forward on this council floor to see how those funds can come into the mix of the Southern California strategy for the future. Thank you so much for stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Reyes, and after that will be Councilmember Labange. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to congratulate you for the hard work, but I also wanted to ask one question. We know that this is an economic engine, not only for the city but for the region, if not a place significant on the international economy. That being said, I've been asking the question from the executive who runs the operations there, and to you as commissioner, potential commissioner, the ability to hire locally, the ability to hire youngsters, seeing that right around you, and I've studied the socioeconomic demographics, significant area of unemployment, need for training and development, for youngsters to build up their trades as our trade and skill set in construction and power lines and everything else that goes with running a harbor, folks are retiring. Our schools no longer teach what they used to in terms of those skills. As a commissioner, do you see yourself, or could you put yourself in a place where we can start building up that capacity and formalizing our ability to hire locally, especially our youngsters?
Yeah, those are good points. We're already working with one of the local schools on a trade academy. There is a big need for people to come up and get trained. Even with our own port staff, we're doing studies about how many people are getting close to retirement age and the people we need to replace. I think that is a big concern down there, to kind of get the newer people to come in. Both, we just need the people as the port expands, and partly, these people here need jobs.
So, as a commissioner, you would be in a position to evaluate the executive arm of the harbor to annually assess how effective they've been in hiring young people in that area, correct?
Yes.
Is that something that perhaps as commissioner, you could recommend or suggest as a major factor in looking how effective executive management could be in that position?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. That's something we should be considering. That is one of the focuses we should be having, yes.
I would love to see at some near future, next year or two, an evaluation process that speaks to their efficiencies in hiring locally. So, I think that would go a long way in supporting Councilmember Hahn's goals in improving the quality of life for the community there.
Yeah, those are good points, and I'll try to get you more information on our current initiatives in that area also.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Okay, congratulations, Commissioner, for your reappointment.
Thank you.
Pretend I just got here right now, and you're going to tell me what you're going to do to make that waterfront nicer, and you're going to connect those tours from those, what you call the ships that have the cruising, to connect to the other part of the dynamic of L.A.
Yeah, I think the cruises could be a big part of the redevelopment there. There's a lot of people coming to the port that really, some of them spent, the studies we've done so far show that the average spending by a cruise passenger here is a lot less than in other cities. It's really kind of known as an embarkation point, you know, people get an LAX, or they, you know, drive in, jump in their cruise, and they go. I think part of the L.A. redevelopment plan, it's creating kind of a draw for, an economic opportunity for people locally, but a draw for the rest of the city, but also the same attractions are going to be, hopefully will draw the cruise industry, and kind of make it an attraction point where people want to spend a couple of days there, spend a little money there.
Sure, and then connect it to other parts of the region, be it Hollywood or Universal City or Pasadena, or wherever it is, you know, we are the engine. Los Angeles, 226 years ago, I don't want to say engine, but, you know, you would be if the water was in San Pedro, not the saltwater, it would have started the city there, but it was on the banks of the L.A. River right here, and that's where the city started.
Yeah, it's an ideal location for that.
What Mr. Reyes was speaking about, what is your relationship with Harbor College, and is Harbor College deeply embedded in what the harbor's doing so it could train young people, or do you know?
You know, I'm afraid I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure there's a big relationship with Harbor College. There is with some of the local high schools.
Right. We'll just see if you could make one there, because our community colleges are under-loved, and they're one of the, I benefited from my Los Angeles City College that got me to State College that got me along the way, and I think they're great schools. I went to City College, but Harbor's a great school.
Okay. I'll look at that more, to be honest, I don't know that much about it.
And I appreciate all the extra work that you do in supporting the initiatives of Ms. Hahn, who's my colleague, because all of us are passionate about our district. Her passion for all of Wilmington and what has gotten a tougher deck over the years, if I could say that, dealt to them, to that of San Pedro, needs to be dealt with appropriately, and bringing people back to the water is so important. And bringing people back to the water is so important, and also supporting the Los Angeles City Fire Department, which has those great boats that do the protection. They told me, Ms. Hahn, I don't know if I had a chance to mention these, if there was water in the LA River, they would have come right up and helped us embrace a park with boat number four. So, so this is important, like getting water back to the LA River. Anyway, keep up the good work. Make people look to the vision of connecting the community, which is so valuable. It's my favorite second neighborhood in Los Angeles. I spent Father's evening there, day, Father's Day evening, whatever the thing is, with my family, because I love San Pedro and the area, and the needs for Wilmington and San Pedro should be addressed appropriately, and you look like you're committed to do it. Check out Harbor College and keep that cruise business going appropriately, because that's good green dollars, as Michael Collins says over at LA Inc. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to being down in the harbor next month as a body. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on the renomination, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. A round of applause for our commissioner.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we take 54 out of order. Mr. Zines withdrawn, calling that special. Nobody wishes to be heard. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 18, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number 18.
We're gonna defer Ms. Zines, I think, as a motion on that item.
Oh, he's back. Why don't we hold that on the desk? Okay. Next item, please, meantime.
Next item is item number 22, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Okay, Ms. Perry, item number 22.
Thanks very much, Mr. President. After many, many months of task force meetings, I'm pleased that this item is before our council today. It's very important that as a body, we take the necessary actions to ensure that local residents are getting construction jobs created by some of these massive city projects. Local hiring is something we all talk about, from Councilmember Weston and Garcetti's effort, through the retrofitting of green buildings, to the mayor's efforts to provide a steady pipeline of candidates to the trades. From the faith-based initiative, we're striving to create employment opportunities for those who are normally disenfranchised from those opportunities. So today, we're gonna take an important step in that direction by authorizing the Community Development Department to commence the Economic Roundtable Study. It is important to establish a nexus between unemployment rates and specific areas of the city. To go beyond the anecdotal for that information, we know is true and accurate, that this study will create the basis and the foundation to make the findings to require local hiring on city construction jobs. I also want to say thank you to the City Attorney's Office and the Bureau of Contract Administration for the excellent research they have done on ordinances from other municipalities around the country that have already been adopted. And I hope that we will be back before our council very quickly with a real mechanism to require local hiring on city construction jobs. So I ask for your support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Ms. Perry on this motion. This is probably the most asked question in my district when there's any kind of a project as to local hire. How do people that are in the community get access to employment? How do they get access to skills? How do they get a chance to get an intern program that then gives them the ability to get a real job? And I think with the amount of development in this city, as we look at it overall collectively, we should be investing in our residents, and it's the best, as I always tell people, the best crime prevention we can do. And I capture Father Boyle's statement, "The best way to stop a bullet is a job." It is very, very true, in that we can find a way that our investment creates job opportunities, job opportunities create. The issue of people dealing with literacy, their health, and eliminating poverty are probably the core issues that we can do the most about. We spend a lot of time and energy on issues that deal with the symptoms of these problems. We go out and we put bids for homeless, we put gang money in for apprehension, but in reality, if we can deal with the issue of the poverty, the issue of literacy, and the issue of health, we will solve most of those symptoms by dealing with the core issues. So I appreciate your efforts, Ms. Perry, because you've dealt with them on project by project. Now, with a city policy as we move forward, we can make sure that that's a part of the structure and the entitlements in each deal that comes through before the city.
Mr. Labange, then, Mr. Reyes, then Mr. Weza. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Just a question. What if you live in an unincorporated area next to the city? Are you, are you, what's the, is anyone in your staff here to answer this question? Does anybody know?
County for help.
I can't hear anything.
Go to the county for help.
Sorry, we, you gotta look.
County for help.
County? The county will help?
Said they would go to the county for help.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, one thing I remember, I just want to state a statement here. I made a rule when I was working for the mayor's office in 1992. I said, "I only gotta hire city people." And the first person I interviewed happened to be a highly qualified person, but they were in a city that's right adjacent to Los Angeles. And whether it's Compton or Linwood or Long Beach, could anyone give me some correction here on this? Pasadena? I interviewed a guy from South Pasadena just yesterday.
Councilmember John Reamer, Director Bureau of Contract Administration. We do currently have what's called project labor agreements on several projects in departments in the city of Los Angeles. The Department of Public Works being the largest, with roughly seven working now. The Los Angeles Harbor Department has two. The World Airports has one. And with the airport and the harbor, they have what they call geographical impact zones. So these are areas that have been impacted by the work that takes place at the harbor and the airport.
So someone could, Englewood could be eligible for a job at the airport.
Yes, in those scenarios.
Good. So it's not just, I'm all for LA, but I'm also understand we, our borders are not pure as they written in some sphere.
Robert Science, Assistant General Manager, Community Development Department. We have a cooperative agreement with our county work source centers, and we don't recognize the county-city boundaries, and we mutually refer across county-city lines all the time.
Good, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all over and over.
Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Weza.
Yes, I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Perry, and Parks and Weston, and those of us who've been pushing to address the needs of our youth. For the past three or four years, we've been asking the administration of this, of all our departments, start looking at this notion of hiring youth, creating jobs, not as a courtesy, not as a public relations effort, but a real tangible effort that speaks to accountability. I believe this study will at least give us the basis by which we identify where these populations exist. We know where they are, but we need to be able to justify and support our actions in court, should we be challenged. So the nexus has to be established, and I believe the strength of Councilmember Perry's effort is to get us on solid ground for asking, for imposing, for requiring these kinds of efforts. We have tremendous staff that's been working with us. It's about time that we give them the strength and the power to enter an office, whether it be in the city or in the private sector, and say, "These are the folks that you can hire. Show us how well you've done. Tell us why we should be partners, knowing that you take advantage of our city resources." And this is a way to put forth the type of effort that allows our dollars to recycle within our own economic circles, within our neighborhoods, within our city. So for that, gentlemen, thank you for being there. I know we need to give you more strength. We need to give you more effort in terms of, we need to show more effort in how we can support you, and making sure that you're not walking into these offices with hand in hand or with your hands open, but actually with a real red pen and say, "This has to get done. This has to get placed in your particular business, and this is how we can hire youth, because they're ready." So thank you for your hard effort, and again, thanks, my colleagues, for their work.
Thank you. Mr. Weza is our last speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's great to see both of you and two individuals who I know are gonna take this by the horns and move it forward. I want to thank the authors of this. I think this is wonderful, long overdue. And I know in my personal conversations with both of you, I've talked to you about what the school district did in the midst of the largest public works program in the country, a $16 billion program, building schools in some very low-income neighborhoods. And when we started this program over there, we looked around and said, "Well, wait a minute. We're not involving some of the folks involved in these projects." But we not only saw it as a way to gain meaningful employment to these individuals, but we also saw it as a way to build communities. Because when people build something in their neighborhood, they're proud of it, they're gonna protect it, and it's gonna build that community. So I think there's lots of benefits by doing this, and I know you will be looking at the We Build program, which I championed on the school district, where we got individuals who live locally near the schools, trained at one of our adult ed schools. We put them in an apprenticeship program with one of the unions, and within the first two years, we had 200 individuals living in some very low-income neighborhoods on the job, building schools, and that's a very successful program. I haven't looked at it recently, but at least when we initiated it, it got off the ground running. I know Mr. Zines was involved with that as well. And also, another level as well is something I know you've been involved with here. We also had the boot camp for small businesses, train them. I know you've been doing a lot of that here in the city.
Yes.
But I think there's some linkages there as well, because not only employment for people who want to work on these public works projects, but small business people in these communities who are oftentimes overlooked, that are there saying, "We see all the big boys coming by, but what about us? We've been here in this community. We haven't left. We stuck it out. We're employing the person down the street. We also need to get involved in this as well." And sometimes it takes some training and support to do that as well. So I trust this is gonna really hit the, take off, and thanks for your focus on this, and thanks to the council members who brought this to our attention.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I love the way you positively think. Just give us a quick thumbnail sketch of what we're doing.
Robert Science, AGM CDD. What we're doing is actually transforming lives. If you want to hit the nail on the head, we are giving opportunities to our local residents to bid on jobs, to actually have access to the information of when jobs will become available. We're also encouraging our contractors, and actually taking it beyond encouraging. Hopefully, when we do get the local hiring policy in place, is that we will be requiring the contractors to hire from our local residents. We have thousands, and thanks to the great efforts of Councilmember Weza on the We Build program, we're training thousands of people throughout our district to fill these jobs within the trade industries. We also are working with the unions to open up the union process for our local residents. Often, folks don't have access to that process. It could be quite daunting for someone who doesn't have any family members within the unions. Currently, through our efforts, we've opened about 250 positions as first-time apprentices through our efforts on the construction side. So on a thumbnail sketch, we are transforming lives.
And as you're transforming, which I think are thousands of people's lives, I keep carrying the cup, homeboy industry, which means a job. A job is a pathway out of gangs. A job is a preventive strategy. It's an intervention strategy. It's the best kind of strategy dealing with young people going forward. When you envision this, will a young man or a woman who goes through the criminal justice system that gets stamped as a felon, how will they be able to participate, and how will they be able to get jobs in this program?
One of the best examples was a Times article that came out about two weeks ago, and the front page of the Metro section had a young man that went through the justice system, who's now working for the ironworkers. We are working directly with the unions. Many of them do not have those requirements that weed out. We also need to be able to look at our own city requirements, which oftentimes does not allow folks that have past indiscretions to come into the system. But they would be referred through our work source systems. We would be able to process them and provide them the referrals directly to their various apprentice programs.
And how many people do you think you can impact over the next couple of years on this?
Well, if, any indication of the growth that we have, if you take something like the harbor, which was brought up earlier, where there's billions of dollars potentially gonna be spent, not just on the capital infrastructure, but also on the logistics side of the equation of the good movements coming in. We're projecting not small numbers. I think we would have probably with the city contracts alone, anywhere between 500 to 1,000, I think, in the first year.
Excellent.
And then we'll be able to have a projection from there.
And we want the same challenge at the airport. We're spending $3 to $5 billion in modernizing the airport, and we want to see the airport part of it. Last night, I was part of a group where they were getting involved, subcontracting work, minority firms, women, and it was exciting to see how they could participate in the process. Have we looked at the airport and the billions of dollars we're gonna spend there and how we tie it into this program?
Well, I'll take the first crack, and I'll turn it over to, the airport part is something that we've had a little bit of frustration with ourselves.
Why?
The airport has established the first-person hiring program, which, and has staff dedicated to it, and they're doing a fabulous job. This council actually put $15 million in training over the next five years to train local residents, both city and the related area. They have not been able to come to agreement with FAA on how to expand those dollars. So it's one area that we still need to...
So the FAA is holding this up?
Currently. So there's one area that we still need to be able to work on. I think looking at our economic development engines from CRA, DWP, harbor, and airports are all right things to do.
Because I met with Mayor Dorn yesterday of Englewood, who is so focused on wanting to do more with his community. We've done the whole community outreach in terms of soundproofing houses and things like that about the airport, but jobs for those young people, be it the city of LA or the city of Englewood, we're all connected here, and gangs are all connected within that mix, too.
You know, with that said, that's the external challenge, but internally, they are committed. They do currently have a project labor agreement with a local hire component with contracting on the Tom Bradley International Terminal. So, I mean, this is roughly a $600 million project, and there is a desire there to reach out and create opportunities. So we have been working with them. We're overseeing portions of their project labor agreement, but the connection here is gonna be a partnering effort between CDD, BCA, the airport, as well as harbor and the other proprietary departments by what I like to call in the phrase, CAO, capacity and accountability creates opportunity. And what we want to do in the city of LA is shine light into the lives of many of these young people. Light being lifting individuals, giving hope today. Hope is the key word. Robert spoke to a fresh start. I like the term hope. We are giving hope back to many who, quite frankly, feel disenfranchised. So by instilling the confidence that the city does care, we are concerned, and this is a great first step. Let me tell you something. This speaks very loudly to the fact that we do want opportunities to happen.
And I must say, I applaud you for your leadership on it. The mayor appointed a new czar, gang czar, whatever he's calling this position. They have to plug directly into you, because the solution for gangs is prevention and intervention as the future way of doing it, and you guys are part of the prevention and intervention strategy. Thank you so much for what you're doing for us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. If we can reconsider 21, I'd like to add a verbal amendment to that. Please open the roll. Reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Recommendation 3B, the total amount is $69,784, and I will give that to the clerk right now. And as amended, if we can open the roll on 21, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If there's no objection, forthwith on 21, please. Mr. Weiss has asked for 48 out of order, and do you want to take the comment card first? Okay. There's no objection. We'll take 48 now, and like to ask Alexander Tower to come forward to the podium and give comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an opportunity to allow local government to provide leadership and funding on stormwater pollution abatement and flood control. Tom Torleksen, Chair of Senate Finance, has introduced a constitutional amendment to provide relief from Proposition 218. SCA 12 amends California Constitution to make fees for stormwater and urban runoff management, work the same as fees for garbage collection, sewer treatment, and water. We know that there are no funds, or very little funds, to deal with the pollution issue here and in most cities. If SCA 12 passes, stormwater and flood control fees and the increases will be exempt from Proposition 218 requirements. We have a responsibility to the Federal Clean Water Act, which placed more responsibility on local governments to monitor and treat stormwater and urban runoff in recent years. Runoff washes pollution and debris into creeks, rivers, bays, and oceans. It's also a common cause for beach closures and advisories. It's a complete human health risk. Without proper flood control, there is a tremendous risk for loss of property and loss of life. If this amendment passes, the power... If this amendment passes, the power will be given to local elected officials to manage stormwater and flood control effectively, with the funds necessary to provide a safer, cleaner community. We have a strong author, Tom Torlicson. We have a huge need and a tremendous opportunity here. We need a two-thirds vote and require bipartisan support. We need the support of each of you to get SCA 12 passed. Thank you.
Ms. Tower, thank you very much. Mr. Weiss, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank, I want to thank Dr. Tower for speaking today. And I especially want to thank Mr. Smith for waiving the matter out of committee so that the council could take a position, and so the position could get transmitted up to Sacramento before the hearing on the matter, which I understand is next week. And, you know, if this became law in the state of California, then cities such as ours would have the opportunity to decide whether and how to assess such fees. It wouldn't mean we'd have to. It wouldn't mean the sky would be falling. It wouldn't mean that such fees would necessarily be assessed, but it would mean that we could. And as we saw, and Mr. Garcetti knows so well because he championed Prop O, the needs are just going to continue to grow in the area of urban runoff and stormwater. And it would be a very reasonable thing for the people of the state to do, to amend the state constitution this way. That's what folks in Sacramento, the Torlicson-Yee bill, or it's not a bill, it's a proposed constitutional amendment, is all about. And with an "aye" vote, we can put the biggest city in the state on record up there before this important hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Weiss. I'm proud to introduce this with you, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for waiving it considering the time, and thank you as well to Heel Bay for their advocacy, and really all the environmental groups that have come together. Ms. Perry had in committee just yesterday, an energy and environment, the last round of Prop O dollars. Let me restate that again. The last round of Prop O dollars yesterday, we voted on in Energy and Environment Committee, and if no more money comes in, that's it, folks. That's half a billion dollars we knew was not going to make all the water clean in Los Angeles. It's going to make a huge impact, but we're going to have 65, I think, different requirements of pollutants we have to take out of different bodies of water throughout Los Angeles, from Echo Park Lake to the Harbor, from our Los Angeles River. I talked about Mr. Smith's project in CD 12 at the Aliso Wash, is that right? And our needs to make sure, we might be able to get some savings from Prop O still for that. We're going to fight for that in CD 12. But we've got whole parts of the city we haven't even touched yet. This is an important amendment, and I know, Mr. Rosendahl, when we were talking about housing, and you talked about trying to reduce the threshold for a vote on a housing bond, something that we prioritize in the state on school building as well. This allows us to have a slightly different mechanism, but essentially it allows us to say, we would raise the sewer fees, or the stormwater fees, excuse me, to be able to match what our needs are to clean up the water. Because there's no way that we're going to be able to go time and time again to the voters, who I think would be for this. But the difference here, folks, because this is a rare thing in government, instead of paying by a credit card, which is what these bonds are, we actually get to pay cash. So we're not paying almost twice as much just on interest payments to investors. We can actually pour all of this literally into clean water projects. So I think it's very important for us to have a very strong voice on this. We led not only the state, but the country with Proposition O. It was the largest clean water bond at the local level for stormwater in the nation's history. But we can't go back to that well over and over again. It is now time for us to be able to have a mechanism to allow other counties and cities, which are part of our watershed, too, and throughout the state, to be able to do what's right, and to finally clean up the water to make it healthy and safe for drinking again, and in doing so, be able to sustain the growth of the state. So I very strongly rise in support of this, and let's get up to Sacramento and ensure that two-thirds of the legislature gets this on the ballot, and a majority vote would change that law statewide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and no other speakers. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item. Forthwith, at request of Mr. Weiss. If we come back, I know we were waiting on item number 18 for Mr. Zine, who's now with us. Mr. Zine, Mr. Parks deferred you on item 18. So I'd like to recognize you on item 18, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. President, on item number 18, Mr. Assistant City Attorney is sitting there wondering what one would do with this. We're going to make a verbal motion on item 18. This deals with deferred comp in the board. It governs deferred comp. In the verbal motion, I move that the ordinance before us be revised to delete the requirement that the four ex officio planned board members be participants in the plan. And I need to get a second. And with that amendment, we would then move the matter on item number 18. Mr. President, I think we ought to open the roll.
A friendly amendment. Mr. Parks?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry's speaker queue's on. I think that's from an earlier-
Believe it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was from an earlier item. So let's go ahead and open the roll on this one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
That's with the amendment.
With, as amended.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All righty. And next item, please.
Next item is item 23, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you.
Item 23.
That's going to be continued, I think.
Okay. You agreed on the continuation?
Yeah, we'll continue.
Okay, great. So that's for one week, was the continuation? Do we have?
June 29, I believe.
June 29. Okay, without objection, we'll continue until then. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 26, and that was called special, and there are also cards. It was called special by the council president.
For Mr. Weezer. Is Mr. Wee- Okay, Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I believe, Councilman Weezer, this is in this district. Can we hold this to make sure he's here?
Sure.
Does that give him the courtesy as a council member of the district?
No problem. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 32, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, Ms. Hahn, item number 32.
Let's see, 32. Oh, yes. Yes, I actually had a substitute motion that I was passing out. Here it is. Colleagues, this is about safe passage, which I've talked enough about to know that there are so many of our kids in parts of our city who are literally unsafe walking to and from school. In fact, they are so fearful that many kids don't attend school because the fear, which is a very real fear, of being beaten up or jumped or harassed on their way to and from school. So safe passage is a way that the city has really stepped in to fill that gap, spent money making sure our kids can walk safely to and from school. I've always challenged the school district to help us a little bit with that. It's their schools, and it's their students, and I really wanted them to kind of help us. They're always constrained in their budget as well. But the good news, and why I'm introducing a substitute motion, is that LAUSD District 7 Local Superintendent told me that they've received a $60,000 grant from the federal government to expand the existing safe passage program at Markham Middle School. And Markham Middle School is in Watts, and it's one of my middle schools that is a very still dangerous place to before-school, after-school. So since they have identified $60,000 for Markham, I would like to substitute this motion to say that we identify $25,000 that can be used to extend the funding for Jordan High School safe passage for additional 90 days, because we were told in the last committee that Jordan High School would not be receiving safe passage funds. So that's what I'm doing here today, just trying to keep my kids safe walking to and from school. So I hope you'll support this substitute motion.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Without objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment, sorry, as a substitute. And let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And Ms. Hahn, we're going to go straight into your next item, I think, 42, if you'd like to take that up.
Forty-two.
On the Evaluation of Social Service and Gang Prevention-
Right. Is there somebody from the Controller's Office here? Controller staff? Great. Come on down. Colleagues, and it's great that our new gang czar, Jeffrey Carr, is here at this time. I was just saying, it was great that our new gang deputy czar, our gang czar, Jeffrey Carr, is here today. This is an item that I think is very critical, colleagues, as we move forward with our comprehensive strategy. Bill, let him listen. Comprehensive strategy on ending gang violence in the city of Los Angeles. And as you know, we in the city of Los Angeles have been criticized that sometimes we're funding programs that don't produce results, and we can't just keep throwing money at gang prevention intervention programs that are not working. So as we are trying to have a comprehensive strategy with the new gang czar on board, it's very important to the residents of Los Angeles, the voters of Los Angeles, the taxpayers of Los Angeles, that we audit our existing gang prevention intervention after-school programs, so that when we then appropriate new monies, we know whether or not these programs are producing the results. Laura Chick, our controller, had agreed that this was a role the controller should play. And then we found ourselves in a bit of a budget issue, and there wasn't, we hadn't really appropriated the money that she needed to audit these programs. So this item will appropriate $500,000 so that our controller can analyze our current anti-gang programs, so that when we do move forward, we can tell the voters, we can build that trust back up of the residents of Los Angeles, that in fact, our programs actually are getting results. They're efficient, they're economical, and they're using our money as wisely as possible to keep our kids from joining gangs in the first place. So I don't know if you want to comment on maybe a timeline and when we think these programs could be analyzed? And the other thing I was going to ask, if the controller would take into consideration analysis or audits of programs that have already taken place. For instance, LA Best has a federal study that has analyzed LA's best, and then the Gang Alternative Program, GAP, also has an evaluation underway. And how can our controller kind of take ones that have already happened and either give her approval so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel on some of the programs that are being analyzed?
Certainly. Good morning, councilmember. I'm Rushmore Cervantes with the Controller's Office. The controller is very interested in conducting this analysis. This is both not just anti-gang programs, but also the social services program, because they're both very much interlinked. We do not want to duplicate any existing or prior studies that have been conducted. We, first of all, want to acknowledge the fact that there was a tremendous report that was produced by Connie Rice. We want to dovetail onto that report and take a look at all of the existing programs that are currently in place now, and try to perform a study as far as how they've performed. That's not going to be that easy, because each of these units, each of these companies have been gathering data on a different matter. So it's really hard for us to be able to gather that data and be able to come up with a comprehensive analysis. We are going to be able to, what we're going to do is look at all of the data that's been collected by these organizations, and come forward not only with what services are out there, also determine what they've delivered, but also be able to come forward with best practices to how we can move forward from this point going forward with any type of new programs, so that we can gauge the effectiveness and efficiencies of these organizations as they move forward, as those organizations, but also the programs, so that we can truly have understanding if we're meeting the needs of the community. And that'll be very helpful as we go out to an RFP, the city moves forward with modifications to this program and awards contracts. We need to basically know how those federal monies are being sent, as well as local dollars, that we can maximize those dollars and maybe look at other efficiencies that are through other city offices or department services, but also what's going on with the LA Unified, as well as the county. So we want to look at it from a holistic approach in how we're going to deal with the gang program. As it relates to what LA's best is, their study, we want to look at all the reports that are out there, so we're not duplicating any type of efforts that are already there. We want to gather all the information that's out there as possible and not reinvent the wheel, so we can come forward with a comprehensive report and analysis that'll be helpful for the council and the mayor to be able to move forward with this important initiative.
Can we expect her to, besides talking about whether or not they're working or not, can we expect her to say, to recommend that maybe some of these programs be expanded?
No, we're not going to be coming forward with any type of data that will say, this one's worked, this program's working, this one's not working. We just basically want to be able to demonstrate this, these are the efficiencies that they have, these are the programs they're providing, this is how they're doing it. And it's really going to be something that, it'll be a policy decision for the mayor and council moving forward, how they want to interpret that data.
We'll have, okay, so we'll have that information, and it'll still be up to us to decide.
Right. Well, you have that information, plus we'll also give the mayor and council tools or a plan to be able to track it in the future. So you'll have information on the existing programs, but also moving forward, you'll be able to, we're going to give you proposals on how you can gauge services moving forward.
Okay. Obviously, time is of the essence. I realize this is going to be difficult, but we are being very careful about re-appropriating dollars to existing programs until we have this final analysis from the Controller's Office. As you know, I'm still moving forward with trying to put something on the ballot in February that would bring in more revenue to the city of Los Angeles to spend on gang prevention intervention after-school programs. So we really need this to be done, certainly right, but we want it to be done as quickly as possible, because we are, you know, I still think we have a crisis in terms of gang violence in Los Angeles. So we need to get this study back in the controller, so then we can make the decisions on how to fund programs going on. What's your time?
We understand the urgency. At the same time, we're all cognizant of the fact we want to deliver quality product.
Right.
We're looking probably mid to late January.
Excellent. Excellent. Good news. Okay. Well, we were happy to do this for the controller. We really want her to be a part of this. We think it's critical to evaluate these programs. We also think it's critical to get the trust of Los Angeles, that we are spending our money on programs that are reducing gang violence in Los Angeles.
Okay, that's a go forthwith, so we can expedite this process.
Yes. Right. We will do that. So, colleagues, I hope I get an "aye" vote on this, and then after we vote, I'll move it forthwith.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, without objection on that. If we can go to item 46 next, please.
Item 46 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Dennis P. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 46 deals with animal services, and we have the director and his staff. But, folks, if you'll come forward, please, and...
Oh!
Do you have an overview on this?
I do.
Okay. We're going to turn over to the General Manager for Animal Services for a presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I want to particularly thank Councilmembers Zine and Cardenas for making the motion, allowing me to be here this morning to share with you some of the things that have been occurring in animal services over the last year, year and a half, and to address any concerns that you may have. The motion specifically asks that I comment on our success with lowering the kill rate and increasing our volunteer, and enhancing our volunteer program. What we are doing in the Department of Animal Services is trying to broaden our program beyond the figurative four walls of our department, and really reach out into the community and create what we call a true humane society, or a humane LA. And some of the ways that we are doing that, and I have to turn this on. Thank you. See if I got this. Okay. There we go. All right. So if we're trying to create, one of the reasons I was recruited to come to Los Angeles was to help in transforming LA into the first major municipal no-kill community in the United States. United States. And oftentimes, I'm asked, well, what is the measure? How can we tell when we have really achieved no-kill or truly achieved the status of a humane community? And through the ages, there's been many who have opined. I think St. Francis Vassisi was the first who drew the link between animal cruelty and domestic violence. Abraham Lincoln once said that "I care nothing for any man's religion whose dog or cat aren't better for it." But one of the quotes that you will often hear in the animal welfare community across the United States today is "The true measure is the greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated," and that was by Mahatma Gandhi. So how are we doing in the city of Los Angeles? And I think just to compare what we're doing in the city of Los Angeles to, say, the state of California as a whole, as you know, during our AB 1634 presentation, we shared with you that nearly a million animals are going into animal control shelters across the United States every year, and more than half of them are being killed. In the city of Los Angeles, however, 46,000 dogs and cats are taken into our animal control centers each year, and over 18,000 are killed. That's about a 40 percent kill rate, much lower than the state average. This particular slide, I think, is of most importance because, and I've highlighted the communities that our critics like to compare us to. And it shows how many animals are being killed per 1,000 residents each year. And this is probably the most scientific way of evaluating and looking at no-kill and our progress. And something that should be said is that when you get to 5.0, there are many in the community, or many in the animal welfare field who opine that that is the threshold for achieving no-kill, that there will always be dangerously aggressive animals and terminally sick and injured animals that will require to be euthanized. As you can see by this, the national average, which is in red in the right-hand column, is 14.8. The city of Los Angeles is at 4.5, which is lower than the 5.0 threshold. And the only cities lower than that on this slide, there are others, but it's New York City, Santa Cruz, which is the model for AB 1634, and San Francisco. Also noteworthy is San Francisco, the Bay Area is actually at 7.1, which has a higher kill rate than the city of Los Angeles. So what I am delighted to report to you is that over the last five years, Los Angeles has seen a 50 percent decline in euthanasia in our shelters. This is the most rapid decline in killing of any major city in the United States. This year to date, from January to the end of May, we have seen an additional 22 percent decline. And to date, in the month of June, we have seen another 32 percent decline. So clearly, we are on the right track to minimizing euthanasia as a methodology for controlling pet overpopulation. And if I can share with you, just over the last 12 months, and this is from June 1st, 2006, through May 31st, 2007, 18,108 dogs and cats were killed. This is the lowest number of animals killed in the city of Los Angeles in a 12-month period in our history. So it is quite a landmark, and it is our intention to continue to reduce that number. Noteworthy is that 64 percent of all the animals that were euthanized are cats. For every one dog we euthanize, we euthanize two cats. 36 percent, of course, then, are dogs, 6,541. Keep in mind, this is in a community of 4 million people. Of the cats killed, 5,020 were orphaned neonate kittens. These are kittens that cannot survive on their own, and they come to us as orphans. And we have a very robust foster program that has helped us reduce our euthanasia rate amongst neonates, and I'll be talking about that in a few seconds. And then of all the dogs killed, 2,647 were pit bull or pit bull mixes. So 40 percent, nearly half of all the dogs that are dying in our shelters are pit bulls or pit bull mixes, or that's 15 percent of the total kill rate. It should also be noted that the number-one dog breed that we adopt out in the city of Los Angeles is also pit bulls. So it's very, very popular as well as a very, very dominant breed with respect to population presence. So how to achieve no-kill? There are two approaches to achieving no-kill. Certainly, one is tactical solutions, and that is pet adoption and pet retention programs. One particularly noteworthy program is the city council's Adopt a Pet, hosted and sponsored by Councilmember Wesson. 100 percent of the animals that come to the city council have been adopted, oftentimes before they ever have a chance to leave these walls, leave this room. But the ancillary benefit is there are hundreds, if not thousands, of Angelenos who see those adoptions and then come down to our shelters and adopt out additional animals. So as you can see from this graph, our placement in homes of lost and homeless dogs and cats continues to rise. And the last 12 months, we've placed in the neighborhood of 22, nearly 22,000 dogs and cats, making Los Angeles Animal Services the number-one pet adoption agency in the world. To the best of our knowledge, there is no agency placing more animals into loving homes than Animal Services. And strategic solutions include spay-neuter programs, legislation. Historically, we've seen the Hayden bill and the Vincent bills was a strategic legislation to help us reduce euthanasia, and the creation of humane animal care centers. If I could just share a little bit about the tactical programs. When I first started with LA Animal Services a year and a half ago, we had a very loosely-defined pet adoption program with about 50 different organizations. We have tightened that up and enhanced it to provide extraordinary services to our New Hope partners, and the program has tripled. We now have about 150 New Hope partners who help us place in the neighborhood of 7,000 animals a year. Operation Felix, this is a program that many of you may be interested in, in your particular districts. It deals with feral cats. We're in the process of working with the Department of General Services, the harbor, several police stations, areas where there are known rat problems. Feral cats are a very, very adept rat abatement program, and it would help us in addressing the kill rate. About one-third of all the cats that we kill in our shelters are feral cats, and they could be serving a real use while purpose in our communities. The STAR program is a program, special treatment and recovery, that allows residents whose hearts are tugged by many of the animals who come into our shelters with medical needs to provide funding through the way of donations to give those animals the care and the treatment that they need. Foster programs, as I mentioned, we're taking in in the neighborhood of 1,000 neonate kittens and puppies every month, from the month of April to September. We've recruited over 60 foster care parents in the last couple of months and have been able to reduce our neonate death rate by about 60 percent. Off-site adoption events, I think, speak for themselves. Many people have a hard time coming to an animal control shelter and are much more easily disposed to adopting from a park or a church parking lot or a synagogue or some public event, street event, something of that sort. So we have many, many adoption events to help get these animals placed. Our volunteer program, we have over 300 active volunteers. We've redefined, reorganized our volunteer program so that we actually have a volunteer liaison in each one of our centers who are reaching out to the surrounding community to help us with pet adoption events and increase adoption and other partnering efforts. Licensing and microchipping, I want to specifically ask or thank the city council for your support in, as well as the mayor's office, in putting our license canvassing program back into our program and funding it this year. And we do believe and have made a commitment to you and to the mayor that as a result of your faith in us, in putting that funding back in, that you will see results and our licensing numbers will go up. It should be noted that animal control, because of our licensing program and our microchipping program, returns four times more pets to their frantic owners than any other large municipal shelter in the United States, about 4,500 a year, which is really extraordinary. K9 Court is a program that we're working with the city attorney's office on. We take in over 2,000 barking dog and aggressive dog complaints in the city of Los Angeles. And many of these cases can be adjudicated in a mediation setting as opposed to a hearing setting. And this is a program we're very excited about. Channel 35 will be carrying some of these episodes where we will help to solve the problems at the lowest level and through mediation, which is typically win-win for everybody. We're also looking at a pit bull academy at our South LA. As I said, 40 percent of all the dogs in our shelters that are dying are pit bulls. This pit bull academy will help us to identify the true ambassadors of the breed so that we can get them placed properly into homes with people who understand the differences between the pit bull and more, and other dog breeds. And Safety Net is another program. I'm meeting with some community organizations tomorrow, as a matter of fact, and we're redesigning a page on our website to put all of the resources in Los Angeles in one easy-to-find location so that if people want to keep their pets, they can find the resources, whether it's dog trainers, behaviorless, council, attorneys, landlords, whoever, whatever the issue can be, they can find the help they need so that they can keep their pet as opposed to relinquishing it to a shelter. Some of the strategic programs, this is a program that I'm very, very interested in, and it's called Humane LA. Often, and I think we're surrounded by so many initiatives, we have anti-crime, anti-gang, anti-poverty, anti-violence. What Humane LA does is it portrays the best of Los Angeles. What are we for? We are for humane practice and policies. And what we have done is we've pulled together a task force of over 25 city departments. We've identified point-of-service deliveries where we can share information with residents of the community, getting away from the silo approach of delivering service. And when somebody comes, when a woman comes in for vaccinations for her infants, she can also at the same time receive information on licensing, microchipping, and spaying and neutering the family pet at no charge because of our voucher programs. Through Humane LA, we'll be working with the anti-gang efforts and other efforts in the community. So this is a report that we're going to be presenting to the mayor in the next few weeks, and it's a program that I'm hoping that LA will embrace, and it'll become a real signature program because it is something that can be duplicated and replicated in other communities across the United States.
Mr. Bokes, just as a time check, we have two members that are excused at 12 and three members who are excused to be out, so we're going to have a quorum issue if we can maybe try to wrap things up a little more quickly.
Just to go through it very quickly, then, other strategic initiatives includes our big fixed program. Just so that you can see, LA's commitment to spay-neuter is extraordinary. No matter how you look at it, no other city can match it. $1.2 million a year. We did 38,000 spay-neuter surgeries last year. We're on track to do 45,000 this coming year. As I testified the last time I was here, building $160 million in Prop F spay-neuter clinics is a very, very expensive but noble way of trying to attempt to deal with the Hayden provision of holding animals for longer periods of time. But spay-neuter programs are much more pointed and targeted, and these facilities will then be able to be used for animals in real, serious needs. Then, of course, legislation. AB 1634 has passed the assembly. It's on its way to the Senate. And we're also working with Councilmember Alacon and Cardenas and Wesson's office on developing a spay-neuter ordinance for the city of Los Angeles. And these are just a listing of other programs and services, and I won't get into them too much, except that maybe the pet of the day, if you go to the mayor's office or website or Animal Services website, you will see a pet of the day feature on there. And that is every time somebody clicks on your website, a different animal that's up for adoption will show on the screen, and it takes up very little real estate on your front screen. And all the directions for putting that on your website are available. And that has helped tremendously. There are organizations and corporations across the city that are using it, and the report back is people will come to their website every day just to see a picture of an animal. So it's a very powerful program. Many of our services can be found on laanimalservices.com. And just reviewing our mission and vision statements is to promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of animals and people in the city of Los Angeles. We envision the day when every pet born is insured a good home and care all its natural life, and no animal will suffer because of abuse, neglect, or ignorance. And all citizens, their property and neighborhoods are safe from the dangers and nuisances of irresponsible pet guardianship. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And then after that, we have Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Lavach.
A few questions of issues that have come to my attention, staffing, that you don't have enough vets. You're down to one vet, is that correct?
We actually have two veterinarians right now. One is on vacation. Will be leaving when she returns, but we have a veterinarian who just started today. So the status quo remains. We have two vets. We have another vet who may be starting within a few days. We have five additional vets who we'll be interviewing in the next few days. And again, as I have pointed out to others, we do have 22 staff members who are licensed veterinarians in other countries who bring a deep appreciation of veterinary medicine to their positions, help us identify animals in needs, in need. And we have 30 contract veterinarians in the community that we can get those animals to as quickly as possible. So the animals in our shelters are receiving very, very fine and good veterinary care.
So you have sufficient vets with the contracting out and what you have in-house?
We are...
Now you talk about...
We have vacancies, and we are looking to fill those vacancies, but because we...
How many vacancies do you have?
We put into the budget 12 vacancies, but keep in mind that six of those for spay-neuter clinics that will not, that we have learned since then, won't open until next year. So we really only need six veterinarians. We'll have three in the next few days, and we'll, should be up to six within the next month or two. And we do have 30 veterinarians in the community that we partner with.
And the kill rate, I've heard controversy regarding the kill rate, that our rate is down because we're warehousing these animals and we're not adopting them. And the East Valley Shelter, I've been told, is already past capacity. And I understand a memo went out that you're not accepting any more cats, if that's correct. Can you discuss that?
That is not correct. Nothing could be further from the truth. As I mentioned, we're receiving 1,000 neonate kittens a month. We're receiving hundreds of cats. So we are and will always continue to receive cats. So I'm not sure where that came from with respect to our adoptions.
Have you heard that?
No.
That the shelter wasn't going to receive any more animals?
We have recently altered our receiving hours, but there is absolutely no preclusion of people bringing us cats at any time.
Just the hours are restricted?
The hours were limited, and let me be clear, Animal Services will never, ever refuse an animal. The reduction in hours was merely to alert the public that if you really love your animal and feel that you're forced to relinquish it, it has a much better chance of being adopted if you bring it to us Tuesday through Friday, because we have many adoption events on the weekend, and we also adopt out more animals from our shelters on the weekend. So if you bring us your animals on the weekend, it will have to languish at least seven days before an adoption event. So we're encouraging people to bring us the animals during the week so that we can rehome them as quickly as possible. But if people can't or refuse to bring their animals back during those hours, we will not turn them away.
And you mentioned the kill rate that we're at now in the last five years. Since you've been in charge, the general manager, has the rate continued to go on down? Your predecessors responsible for setting this trend, and you've continued that?
To be sure, the low-hanging fruit over the last five years has been picked. We are down, as you see by the numbers, to housing primarily pit bulls and pit bull mixes, neonate kittens, and feral cats, animals that are a challenge to adopt by anybody. Despite that, last year, we had nearly a 7 percent decrease in the euthanasia rate. And last year was a very difficult year for a variety of reasons. This year to date, we've reduced the euthanasia rate by 22 percent. And so far, in this, in June, we're down 32 percent. Now, I do, and I'm sensitive to the concern of overcrowding, and Animal Services walks this fine line. If we euthanize too many animals to make space, we're a death camp. If we house too many animals because we want to lower the kill rate, we're concentration camps. I don't think either is the case. I think we make very judicious and compassionate decisions every single day. We're about to introduce a brand-new program called HART, H-A-R-T, in which four employees will be required in making a decision whether or not to euthanize an animal. And we'll be looking at everything from behavior to medical condition to the population of the shelters, to a rescue of a partner's ability to come and get the animal. A lot will go into making that decision, and I think that's extraordinary for a municipal shelter to be deliberating with that kind of scrutiny over every animal that we're going to be euthanizing.
The issue... The issue, 18,108 dogs and cats that go through euthanasia, obviously, people are not being responsible as they should be, and I think we need to emphasize that over and over. Another matter that I saw on the board that wasn't really discussed in detail was coyotes. In my district, we have a big problem with coyotes that concern from the residents in areas east of here, near Glendora. They've got bears that are coming down because of the drought, et cetera. I don't know if we have any bears yet in this area, but I know we've got coyotes and bobcats, et cetera. Can you address the coyote issue and any activity taking place to try and limit that invasion into the neighborhoods?
That is a very difficult situation, and I actually wrote an article for the LA Times that's available on our website with respect to state law when it comes to coyotes, and that is that they can't be relocated and they can't be shot.
They can be shot or can't?
They cannot be trapped or relocated, and they can't be shot unless there's a, an exposure of some type, if there's a concern for rabies. And I am so open to discussing this and coming up with strategies and changing state statute if needed. But in Los Angeles, as it was in New York and in Arizona, my philosophy has always been, this is our natural heritage, and there has to be a way that we can learn to live together without endangering the public, but by educating the public that these animals, if left alone, are wonderful Kodak moments in our neighborhoods. But if you leave them alone, they will go home on their own.
Well, they may be going home. Their home is people's backyards, and we get a lot of complaints regarding their small dogs that are now gone because I'm sure the coyotes are dining on people's pets. That's a concern that is.
It's a major concern.
Mr. Zine.
Excuse me, Mr. Zine. I believe we're off topic from the euthanasia.
No, we're not. We're still on the topic. We're on the topic of animal services, and we're talking about animal services, and coyotes are part of animals.
Is that what's written on the agenda?
Yeah. Look at that agenda.
The agenda's on euthanasia.
Take your glasses off and clean your jaws.
But even if we are on topic, you're over time, so.
Well, that's okay. See? You got the right, you got to take the right attack. So I'm over time. We need to get together on some of the coyote issues up in the San Monica Mountains.
I promise you, I will get with you.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, you still got your critics that keep on bombarding us with emails and calls, so we try to serve every need and every purpose, and I know it's a daunting task, so.
Right, right. And I think the more that the city council and the entire community really becomes aware that we are dealing with a very small number of vocal critics, you know, who we constantly are opening the door to try to have some dialogue with, but they're not wanting to work with us. They would rather attack, so I appreciate your understanding.
We have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Lavon, and Mr. Smith. And just a reminder, folks, that we have two people who are excused at noon, so we'll be down to a bare quorum. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate your report. It was a great report.
Thank you.
And you've really shown great leadership with this department. Here are the two big questions, okay?
Ready.
Spade and neutering. We were wrong when we said four months. The animal is not developed enough as an animal to truly be able to be spayed or neutered. I've learned that since we, as a great council, took action. Without knowing what we were doing, I might add, we said four months works. Now, the state law is looking at modifying the law. Veterinarians have been calling me, people who love their dogs have been calling me. Tell me where we can take this four-month idea and be more appreciative of the animal and its own natural development.
Right. With all due respect, I don't believe that we were wrong, but living in a democratic process, we are always willing to compromise. The opponents of AB 1634 have been very, very busy in digging up reports that are years and years old on the four-month issue. The American Veterinary Medical Association has a public opinion that the earlier the spay-neuter occurs, the healthier it is for the animal. California Veterinary Medical Association has also had that opinion, but you are quite right. There is a need for compromise, and it is my understanding that there is an amendment moving through Sacramento that will change AB 1634 from four months to six months. That's at least part of the discussion and the debate right now.
And the other part of that discussion is veterinarians might be able to work with this law that might give owners the opportunity not to spade or neuter until they're a year old?
The California Veterinary Medical Association is one of the sponsors, so they have been working with this law from the beginning. And yes, that is also part of an amendment under discussion, is that in addition to raising the bar from four months to six months, the possibility of allowing veterinarians to say, add another six months to that, which was part of the original law. The veterinarian could have done that as it was originally written, but this is much clearer.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And it wasn't like my colleagues or myself didn't, you know, we're just learning as we do this all the time, and out of respect, I went to a fair at my Westchester park lot there, and there were hundreds of people there, and they were adopting dogs and cats and rabbits, and there was a tremendous spirit among people in the adoption business that I just found extremely exciting. I'd much rather see dogs and cats adopted than put down, and rabbits as well. And there is a lot of energy in our city and in our state. Every time Weston goes there with a little pooch and somebody takes it home, I'm thrilled because I'd rather see that animal in a loving home than anywhere else, okay? The second issue has to do with the licensing. What percentage of our dogs are licensed?
Well, it's difficult to know what population of dogs we have in the community. There are two formulas out there. One would say that there are 400,000, and the other is 800,000. So if you say 400,000, then we're at about 25%. And if you say 800,000, we're at about 10% or so or less.
So talk about the strategy you're using that we in the Budget Committee reinst, uh, put your money back in to go out and get all these dogs licensed.
Well, for the first time, we're going to be able to address this in a very serious way. For the last couple of years, we've been addressing it in a rather ad hoc, you know, throwing extra people into this. Actually, just met with our team yesterday and coming up with a strategy that'll be much more systematic in addressing problem areas in our community where we know animals are running at large and are unlicensed to follow up on not only those animals, but also if you look at the LA Times or any other newspaper in the LA area, at any given time, there are tens of thousands of dollars' worth of animals being bought and sold in the city of Los Angeles every day. So we're going to be much more aggressive at following up on those and making sure that those animals either have a breeder's permit or are properly licensed.
Will you give us a report back every few months on how we're moving forward aggressively on licensing?
Would be delighted to. I'm very excited about this program, in fact.
So am I, and I think it's a great program you're putting in place. As the summer progresses, we talk about gangs, we talk about prevention and intervention, all this good stuff. This is a good intervention strategy for teenage kids, 14 years and above. We should deputize them in some sort of a way that they can bang on the doors and find out who has dogs with a sweet smile, and they can get them into the process.
Right.
If these teenagers are out there as part of their summer job program, it is an apprenticeship program. It's keeping them out of gangs and drugs, and they do a tremendous service if we could make this program happen with teenagers.
And that is actually part of our overall Humane LA approach of integrating so many of the services we have available under this umbrella of how do we create a more humane society.
The last question is, what city in the country has a larger percentage, like 50% or 60% of their dogs licensed? Do you know?
I'm not aware of any city in the country that, Maricopa County, which is a community that I managed several years ago, had a, I believe, a 30% or 35% rate, which was considered one of the highest in the nation. Calgary, Canada, I believe, has a higher rate, maybe about 50% or so. But licensing is, there may be, there may be models out there that I'm not, communities out there I'm not aware of, but licensing is, I will tell you, those communities that do have a robust canvassing program do have higher licensing rates.
Yeah, and so let's have a more aggressive canvassing program, number one. Let's look at good practices, best practices of Calgary, Canada, and other places, and let's get our stats, be they 10% or 25% to over 50%. Let's give kids jobs, and let's get all of the animals within the process of licensing. And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavon.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barth, Mr. Boggs. Good to see you. How many animals in Los Angeles?
Well, again, we have no way of knowing.
I want you to find out next time you come here, because there's nothing in your report. I would like to know, there's maybe 5,000 horses?
Well, if you're asking how many are licensed, I can tell you that. But if you're asking how many are out there, there's, there are, as I just mentioned to Councilmember Rosendahl.
It would be helpful in your report, which is very good, and I'm trying to be fast because we've been long on this, is to get a, as one sheet of how many animals are here. That's been real important. Number two, veterans are very important, and also vets are important. More vets. Let us know when you're short. Volunteers, how many volunteers in your department?
We have 300, over 300 active volunteers.
300 active volunteers.
And that's not counting our foster program, where we have about 60.
And the last thing I want to say, in your report that you gave there, you said some equation to concentration camps. Did you hear that?
Yeah, well.
I think you should be real cautious when you use that term, because it's very, very deep and serious to many people in the city.
And I understand, and that is not something, I was quoting what our critics are saying about us.
I understand. Don't, just, that's something so solemn there. And lastly, I say that this is about euthanasia, and why do you say "kill" so much in your report? Why do you say euthanasia instead of kill?
That is a.
Because you sound like a slaughterhouse, like a meatpacking house in commerce.
This is a philosophical issue. I do have a commission who prefers that I use the word "kill." I prefer the word euthanasia. I'm open to using either.
Yeah, tell me use euthanasia. I think it just sounds "kill." We're trying to prevent killing. Anyway, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I think I should have took you upon that question there, Tom. I could have.
He went past 30. Couple of questions, please.
All right. If there's no objection, that will end the debate on this. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. You'll receive and file that. And next, we'll return to item number 24. Is that the right number? 26, excuse me. 26, and recognize the chair of our Plumb Committee, Mr. Reyes.
Yeah. Do you?
Thank you, Council President.
Yeah.
I know we're pressured for time, so I wanted to be as brief as possible. This is a project that has been very controversial in the Northeast. It's a project that I was able to sit in the first committee meeting at Plumb. I missed the second one. I was in Sacramento, working on our waste management issues. But on that first hearing, we were able to address some of the concerns we had in terms of its impact. I can share with your colleagues that from the first vote back in '04, I voted against the project because I strongly felt that the conditions that were set with the subdivision were inadequate. I felt the impacts were much more severe than what was being recommended, and as such, I stand with that record, and I'll be consistent with that vote back in '04. But I'd like to ask the city family to come to the table, our city engineer, our city attorney, our building and safety, to answer a couple of questions, please. Back in '04, when I voted no against this project, I was very concerned with the watershed issues. I was very concerned with the density issues. I was very concerned with the impact on our environment, given the limited amount of open space we already have in Northeast. But there are certain legal realities that were pointed out in committee, and can you define those, please?
The legal issue that we're looking at is whether or not, under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, additional environmental review has been triggered for the project, which has been approved, subject to a certified environmental impact report previously. And in order.
Can you give us the date when it was approved?
I can't give you the exact date, but I believe it was 1993.
1993.
In order to trigger the investigation, the factual inquiry into whether additional environmental review is triggered, you have to have a pending discretionary approval for the project, where the project has already been approved, subject to a certified EIR. So that was the first question that we looked at, whether or not there's a pending discretionary approval at this point in time. Then we looked at the legal triggers under CEQA, Section 21166, and the State CEQA Guideline 15162, which sets forth the standard, the factual standard and showing that needs to be made in order to trigger the requirement for additional environmental review once you've already completed the CEQA review process.
The city engineer, when we met the first time, I'd asked you the question if you had worked on a project this size in an area like Northeast, and what was your answer there?
And my answer is no, we haven't worked on one this size in the Northeast area.
Okay. And given that assertion, I was very uncomfortable as to how we were using our discretion and what we were requiring of this project. When I look at some of the analysis, my understanding is that Pullman Street follows an alignment of a natural water course in this location.
That's correct.
And that the impact of that imposition is not part of the original footprint.
Could you repeat the question?
The footprint that we approved did not include the additional imposition, given the requirements we set on Pullman.
The track description included the construction of Pullman Avenue and followed along the alignment of Pullman.
Correct. And my contention is that these requirements have an additional impact on our area, given the condition of a watershed, given the fact that there is an alignment of a natural water course in this location. But I'm being told by the city attorney that those are requirements that were set by the city, and that we are now in a dilemma, given what was granted back in 1993 and what was approved back in 2004. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure we understand the question, Councilmember.
At this point, we are looking at a project that was given certain requirements and conditions, correct?
That's correct.
And that was defined back in 2004?
Those conditions were actually defined back in 1993 and subsequently modified to the state that the track was approved in 2004, yes.
And you're basing it on how the codes currently define how we behave as a city when projects are proposed of this size?
That's correct.
Okay. And that is where I strongly differ, given the amount of time that has changed, the amount of time that has passed, the changes that have occurred, the impacts in our natural resources, given our watershed issues. And unfortunately, we are told that we can't not change what we've already granted back in 1993 legally, correct?
The legal standard that I outlined would have to be met, and in this case, the city attorney's office has evaluated the situation and concluded that there is no pending discretionary approval with regard to the B permit application. So your initial requirement to have a pending discretionary approval does not exist here, so legally, you wouldn't be required to go on to the additional factual inquiry into whether additional environmental review is required under CEQA.
There are many other hillsides and ridges that exist in the city, but Northeast in particular, there's few and precious little space we have. I'll be moving, next council meeting, with a motion to discuss and evaluate how we're making these decisions to avoid an impact of this type that we are right now going through, given how much time has lagged, how we include impacts, and how we define impacts. And unfortunately, this was not done back in the early '90s. I voted against this project back in 2004, and I will continue to do that today. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I actually had brought a motion a few months back to examine whether or not a supplemental environmental impact report would be required on this project. The reason I. The reason I did that is because there was a number of constituents, a number of residents that lived near the project and around the Alserino community, that were concerned that they were not being given the time to explain what exactly was happening and whether or not a supplemental environmental impact report would be required. And since then, I think the departments have done a fabulous job in being responsive. They've sat down a number of times with our constituents, with myself, to go through this project and figure out if, in fact, a supplemental environmental impact report would be required. We are, right now, at a difference of opinion, however. We went through Plum a couple of times, a few times, and it's come down to, I think, two requirements as to whether a supplemental impact report is required. One is whether there is any discretionary action, and second, even given, if there is a discretionary action, if that would raise to the level, the city attorney could correct me if I'm wrong, that there is additional new information or addition to the project, something like that, right? And I, in Plum, asked that we move this item forward and that we require a supplemental environmental impact report, because I did believe that even though the city attorney has mentioned there is not a discretionary approval under a permit B, that there was some flexibility. And today, one of the attorneys for the Natural Resources Defense Council actually submitted a letter which outlines, or suggests, a code where the permit, it could be argued that the permit B is a discretionary approval. So if I could ask the city attorney, if you had, I think you had told us to look at the municipal code 62.106B, but the NRDC points to 62.105B, not 106, but 105B. Have you looked at 105B and whether or not that would allow us to interpret whether the permit, B permits are, in fact, discretionary? Please hold my time.
Yes, our office has looked at all the citations that we've received in various letters with regard to the ministerial discretionary issue, and we have continued to conclude that the B permit for this tract project is ministerial.
Even under that new section? Because you cite 106B, but the NRDC is citing 105B.
That's right. It doesn't change our conclusion.
And why not?
Susan Phan is going to address that.
Susan Phan, City Attorney. The two sections work together. 106B actually sorts these types of permits into A permits and B permits. 1062105 is the actual permit requiring section. That's the one that was cited by the NRDC. These permits are actually being sought under 62105A, subparagraph A. They're called B permits, but they're under subsection A of that code section. And that's the section we were always talking about. The 106 one was simply how to name the permit. The meat of the discussion is in 62105. But we looked at all the letters that the NRDC has cited. We've looked at their case law. We've looked at the code sections they've cited and the arguments that we've made, and we still, we disagree with them. We believe that based on our own CEQA guidelines, on the code sections we've cited before, on the way the department implements these code sections, that in this case, it is a ministerial action. The discretion occurred back when the tract map was approved. What's happening right now is the implementing of those discretionary actions. The permit, we do not believe, is discretionary within the meaning of CEQA.
The B permit is required to build a public access road to this development. It's a pretty significant public access road. Goes quite a bit of distance. I'm not good with distance, but it goes quite a bit of distance. And wouldn't there be some type of conditions when they build this road, such that it would require some debate, discussion, some discretionary approval for this road, and it's not just a ministerial road? Because if we ask somebody to build a road, we don't just say, "Build that road." We say, "Let's discuss, let's deliberate with you, what we would like that road to be like." And so, given that, wouldn't that be a discretionary action as opposed to a ministerial action? Please hold my time, if I have any time.
Councilmember, the requirement for the construction of Pullman Avenue was a condition of the tract. So the, when we gave the approval to the project, we specified that Pullman Avenue would be constructed to standards acceptable to the city engineer. Those standards are established through actions, with the planning, the general plan, and also the Department of Transportation, based on the classification of the street. So Pullman Avenue, once it was specified to be constructed, we pull out our tables in charge and say, "Okay, it has to be this white, it has to be at this maximum slope, as specified in the tract condition." And then we look at the plan and say, "Does it meet that? Yes or no? If it does, great. If not, go back and fix it."
So when we issue B permits in other instances, in other developments, they're always ministerial?
That's correct.
They're always ministerial. Even though we tell them to do certain things in certain part of the road, put a light here, don't put a light there, have so much width here.
The, those things are actually, whether or not the light's required, whether or not a storm drain or a sanitary sewer is required, those actions were taken at the time that the tract was reviewed, and those measures become mitigation measures for the additional load that that project places on our infrastructure. Once that decision is made, that determination is made, then we use that basically as our checklist to see if they fulfilled the conditions of their approval.
Okay, thank you. And, Councilmembers, I'll let others speak on this issue. I do want to ask our Council President, if we could, we have a number of people here, and I know we're already running behind schedule, but some people may wish to speak today, and if I could ask to open the public hearing for 10 minutes, say, so we could allow some of the people who are here to speak. And if I could end my comments by saying, I know we're in a disagreement, but I look at those hills and I look at the demand for those hills for many different purposes. And one thing that I'd like to see is us continue to find ways to protect them, and I see this as a gray area, although you're telling me it's more black and white. But in this case, I kind of have to go with my conscience and still suggest that we do a supplemental EIR, because we, the reason residents wanted more information is because there was a possible underground water table, I know you mentioned that was analyzed in the EIR in '90, something, that all those conditions were examined. But I do believe that a lot of time has passed. I do believe that a fresh look at this would allow us to view whether or not, in fact, the expansion of the original footprint would raise to the level of us having to look at the additional impacts this project is providing. But I have to go with my conscience and suggest that. But I won't make that motion now until we listen to more comment in the public, please.
Thank you. We have Mr. Weiss on the Q. Do you want to do the public hearing? Okay. We've got a number of cards. I'm just going to go through them. We're going to put the clock just at one minute, which I know is a brief time, but to try to get as many people as possible in those 10 minutes. And I will try to balance as much as people filled out cards on either for or against or public comment. Maria Mejia is the first speaker. After that will be Ben Resnick.
Good afternoon, honorable Councilmembers. Maria Mejia, on behalf of the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Basically, what this amounts to is a different project. This project was not reviewed during the 1993 EIR. This is an expanded project. The amount of grading has increased approximately 600%. The number of lots that have been approved with this new project have expanded to 56 units, whereas in 1993, they were 18 units. The prior EIR did not analyze groundwater. It was recently discovered that groundwater exists on the project site. Based on these facts, the city has used its discretion in deciding to issue a B permit. This is not the same project that was reviewed in 1993. So we urge you to please require a subsequent or supplemental EIR. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben Resnick is our next speaker.
Good afternoon, Ben Resnick. Jeffrey Mangles, Department of衆衆, representing the applicant. What you have before you today, of course, is just a question of whether or not the project changer, there's a supplemental EIR required. This project was approved by the city in 1993. Demands were made, including Pullman Road. Our client's not volunteering it. You, the city, insisted on it. Then you took action in 2004, and you adopted the map. You accepted the tract map. We recorded it. Then in 2005, the department came back and said, "You need to realign Pullman," and the city initiated that. All of that was done with a full EIR. In the last six months, seven months since Mr. Weisar's motion, the motion, the purpose of the motion has now been served. The motion simply said, "Let's review and make sure that another EIR is not required." Four departments have looked at it. Four departments have written extensive memos, all saying no further EIRs are necessary. We are entitled to our permit as of last January. The initial motion by Mr. Weisar said the department should come back in 45 days. We should have had our permits last March. It's now the end of June. It's cost over half a million dollars in delay. My client will have no choice but obviously to go to court, to insist on his rights to develop this. We had, we're ready to grade, and we have permits ready to be issued. We ask you to simply receive and accept the report. There's no action required. Thank you.
Thank you. Aubrey White is our next speaker. After that, we will turn to Mr. McDonald.
Hi, I'm Aubrey White with the City Project, and on behalf of the City Project, Anawak Youth Association, Williams Segalascas Institute, and Mujeres de la Tierra, we'd like to recommend a supplemental EIR on this project as well. The Los Angeles Times and editorial recently emphasized that unfair disparities in land use planning in Northeast L.A., including El Sereno and Glassell Park. According to the Times, it's necessary to protect the quality of life in Northeast Los Angeles by providing access to public parks and preserving ridgeline views, the same way that the Mulholland specific plan in Brentwood Hills do on the west side. City Council District 14, where the proposed Elephant Hill Luxury Homes housing project is located, has only 2.12 total acres of parks per thousand residents, compared to 57.68 acres in City Council District 11. The population of City Council District 14 is disproportionately Latino and low-income. Children of color living in poverty with no access to a car have the worst access to parks and school fields, and suffer from highest levels of obesity in Los Angeles. A supplemental EIR we see as completely necessary in this project.
Thank you. I think you packed more words into a minute than I've ever heard. Good job. Is it Kevin McDonald?
Kevin McDonald. Good afternoon, Councilmembers.
Good afternoon.
This is a simple question, the legal inquiry that was explained to you by the city attorney's office. I think the city attorney's office explanation is right on. It is a two-part inquiry. Only after you reach the conclusion that you do have a pending discretionary approval do you go to the second prong. And even if you did in this case, the staff has reported repeatedly that the second prong would not be satisfied in this analysis either because of the fact that there are no substantial changes to the project. Quick comment on the NRDC letters addressing the code sections. There were two attempts by the NRDC to find some code support for their position that there was a discretionary approval pending. Their first attempt aired because it relied on the Building Code, which deals with private development, has absolutely nothing to do with B permits. They failed again in their most recent try in citing 62105B, because as the city attorney explained, their B permits are analyzed under 62105A. B deals with voluntary permits, seeking the benefit of city inspections and approvals for something that may be dedicated in the future. It does not apply here.
Thank you. Elva Yanez, our next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Elva Yanez. I'm a resident of Alserino. I want to thank the Councilmember for his actions today. I urge the Council to follow CD14's lead and evaluate the facts. You've heard some of the facts already, that this development was illegally expanded, and there's underground water. That's new information that wasn't identified in the original EIR. Some other important facts for the Council to keep in mind. In June 2004, the developer sued the city of South Pasadena to keep it silent on Track 10, a track condition 10, that allowed the adjacent city, this adjacent city, to approve or disapprove the development. In July of '04, the developer sued the city of L.A. to expedite approvals of numerous unmet conditions. As a result, the city attorney advised the Council to approve the final tract map. Just two council members, Councilmember Reyes and Villarigosa, voted against the tract map. Now the developer is threatening to sue again, to bully the city into sidestepping environmental review of this dangerous development. The fact is that the city gave the developers an inch, and they took nine more acres. Please don't give them another opportunity to take advantage of us.
Thank you. Paul Fileberg is next, and then Tim Grabiel.
Good afternoon, Paul Fileberg, Mesa Verde. I'm the applicant developer. I do want to say that the original EIR did cover every concern that was raised, and it's been thoroughly reviewed by both the departments and staff and the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Grabiel.
How you doing? My name is Tim Grabiel. I'm with the Natural Resources Defense Council, which has been a number, has been mentioned a number of times. I have had something prepared, but I'm just going to tear it up and just, you know, try and put it simply. We could all cite the different code sections. We can all cite the various provisions. I, and Jan Chatten-Brown and Carson, who co-signed the letter, adamantly think that it is discretionary. But I just want to put it out there plainly for this council right now. We have a B permit that's outstanding, a B permit to do improvements on a road that the public is going to use. It's outstanding, has not been issued yet. It's a public right-of-way that the public will be traversing on a daily basis, and you're telling me that the city cannot put any conditions, does not exercise any judgment, has no discretion? The plain language of the section cited says, "To the satisfaction of the city engineer, his acceptance of the improvement. The city engineer may impose such other conditions as may, in his discretion be required. Nothing in this subsection shall be deemed to bind the city to accept such improvements." Period. I urge you to come out on the right side. Thank you.
Paul Edelman is our last speaker.
Hello, honorable members. Paul Edelman with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Member Weisar nailed it. There's a total disconnect between the proposed road and the final EIR. The final EIR did not consider that road, did not consider the nine acres of additional grading and a thousand-foot road. There's not even a neg deck for that. The key thing is this B permit, this B permit serves 60-plus lots, not 18 lots, or the 24 lots considered in the final EIR. That's hugely growth-inducing. There's no possible worst-case piecemealing CEQA case before you. It's like you're dealing drugs in front of the police station. We urge you to be bold. We need a unified CEQA document, some kind of subsequent CEQA document, and with Ms. Mejia's letter and with the NRDC's letter, we've given you a great foundation to be bold. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker for the public comment cards. We'll return now to Mr. Weiss, and then Mr. Lavange. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, colleagues, this was a very gruesome case in Plum, and I just want to let you know about that, and let you know how admirable Mr. Weisar was in Plum that day, and how strong and determined Mr. Reyes has been every step of the way on this particular matter. And what happened in Plum was we heard similarly impassioned statements, such as what we've heard today. And then, at the conclusion of the public comment period, we brought the attorneys back to the table and asked them what legal options we had as legislators before us. And so I'd like to turn to the attorneys again and ask you what legal options we have before us as legislators today. Hold my time.
As legislators, if you have concerns about development in the hillsides, you are able to adopt ordinances that set standards for development of the hillsides, that can limit development in the hillsides, and that can address all these things. But that's as legislators. Here, you have an issue with a permit that the city council approved some time ago when they approved the tract map. And the law says that only when you have another discretionary action on that matter, do you have the authority to be able to require additional environmental review-
do you have the authority to be able to require additional environmental review and then add additional conditions to it. You've heard staff talking about what their discretion is. They look to the standards. Once the city and the track map indicated that the street's going to go there, then when they issue their B permit, they make sure it's built properly according to the standards. That's not discretion within the meaning of sequoia, based on the way our codes are written. Now, you can change our codes to make all these types of decisions discretionary so that every time a B permit is issued, that it conceivably have an EIR attached to and go to council. But that's not the way the codes are written right now, so you don't have that authority at this point. But those are all options for you to follow if you wish in the future. It won't change the impact on this property, but that is, that is an option that you have for the future.
And Mr. Reyes is going to initiate legislation along, conceptually related to what you just said, and there will be policy pros and cons that will come out and will be addressed if and when, you know, that motion process gets initiated, or Friday. My question to you is, with respect to the matter of initiating an EIR on the basis of this B permit issue, what can you tell us about that?
We advised previously, and we stand by that advice, that the B permit is not discretionary. As best we can tell from reading the codes, talking to the department about how it's implemented, looking at our sequoia thresholds, it states it is not discretionary. If that is the case, then there's no jurisdiction to require an additional environmental review.
And so, and so what can happen if we nonetheless issue such an order?
Well, if you, you could be sued, and then the court would decide that ultimate issue. And if the court decided against us, there would be some liability potentially. Or if you don't, we could be sued as well. Be sued either way.
I get that. I get that. But it tends to be worse off when you take an action that is directly contrary to the advice of your council, which has been stated in public session on multiple occasions and pretty directly. That's a question.
That's a question?
Yeah.
We give our best advice at the time, whether the courts give credence to this or something else.
I just, I wanted to make it very clear, and, 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 I mean, I, we asked a lot of questions at Plum to try to find a way on this one because I think everyone on this council wants to find a way on this one. And regretfully, the, our council have not indicated to us that there is such a way. That's the explanation for why I voted the way I did at Plum. And I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange, our next speaker.
Hello, Mr. President. Hi.
Hello, Mr. Lavange.
Counselor Fan, let me just ask a question there. They went from the blue to the expanded area. The representative spoke so fast. I don't know if you could come back up here if I had any questions. You spoke so fast, Mr. Resnick. I didn't understand what you were saying. But there's a blue line and then there's a red line, right? And there's an existing approval for a blue line area, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
And this is expanding to the red line?
The red line includes areas that were off-site improvements required as conditions of approval for the, for the actual blue line. So the work being done off-site are conditions of approval to stabilize the hill below the subdivision, but they do not have the right to build on that even though they own it.
So there'll be no building in the area between the blue line and the red line?
The area in the blue line would be subject to the current ICO that's in place, so it...
Will it be open space or will it be built on?
Well, it's privately owned. The developer bought those parcels in order to be able to put in the slope easement that was required of him. If he wished to build on them, he would have to come in under the provisions of the interim control ordinance, which would make that discretionary.
And they let their intentions be known on this? Do we know that, Mr. Counselor for the applicant, Mr. Resnick? Do you plan to build in that area as well?
I'm sorry?
Do you plan to build in the area that you have?
The slope that is being built is to support a street.
So you're not going to ever build in that area?
No, you can't build on the slope, but there's...
No, no. You're not going to ever build in that area?
I can't see what area we're looking at.
Well, see the blue line, red line? I'm sorry, turn them around. Mr. Miller, I hate to ask you if you're standing right there, please.
Yeah, we can't build on that down slope.
So there'll be no building. So the only area that you're going to build is where it's yellow? No other...
That's the only track that was approved before you. Anyone goes beyond, anything beyond the yellow, they have to come back in here for another subdivision and approval under the interim control ordinance.
I understand that, but here's a question I want to ask you. If you say, "You know what? We want to build those homes because we want to build homes and, but we're not going to build in that area. We're going to leave it open and deed it that way." That makes a little bit of a concession to me because all of a sudden, and I don't want to say it's an attack, but we have the last lot, empty lot in Los Angeles soon to be written. They're building across from our home in Silver Lake. Legal, it's one house. Fine, okay, we're dealing. Every lot's going to be built on in Los Angeles. That's the reality. But how is it done is the challenge. And if you could say, "Okay, part of this is going to be open," the other part, I think he's trying to figure that out right there, and maybe we could have some, no one likes it, but there is an opportunity to try to find a concession that makes it, because the city attorney says that we're in a bind here. Is that correct? We're in a bind here. If we don't approve this, then we, we are, you feel we're in soft ground. Mr. Resnick, I wasn't through. I want to know if you're going to say you're not going to build in that area, you know?
The area shown in brown, I guess, down there...
Well, let me go point it out. Do you have a hand, Mike?
Is subject to potential, is subject to potential development, but it can't be built on without going through another process.
I understand. Yes, this is approved.
Right. And that's what's before you.
Right. But that you left is open space. Do you have an intent to build it?
In that area, there is an intent to build at some point.
Oh, at some point?
Yeah.
See, then, then, okay.
But that's, that's not what's before us today.
Okay, I got it. I just want to hear, there is an intent to build everywhere. And the challenge that we have is, is a council, and I think of Marvin Browdy, God rest his soul, I think of Sidney Misakowski, who used to sit right next to me, who read everything that ever went across the desk. And then we never figured something out that tries to deal with this issue because all of a sudden you have these roadways and all of a sudden lead to it. That is an impact. If we were building a city street to reach a public facility, would we have to do an EIR? Mr. City Attorney, could you help her? Madam City Attorney?
If you were deciding to build a city street independent of this...
Yes.
In other words, if the city council is deciding, "Well, we want to put a street somewhere."
Because let's say there's a safe route to school...
For whatever reason that you want to. Your decision to do that would be a discretionary action. That would be subject to sequoia, and then therefore there would have to be some form of environmental review for that. Whether it be an EIR would depend on whether there would be impacts. But that's if the city council decides to put in a street independent of any other action.
Well, but doesn't, you know, this hasn't, see, one of the other things too, in the last lots in Los Angeles, the next chapter, what happens in this impact here, and I still can't see the representative, they're still there, on this, how much destruction naturally, not caused by intention, by earth-moving equipment, tractors, trucks, lumber trucks, cement mixers, impacts all the other streets that has an environmental impact, and then they feel real bad. I'm expressing views of people who feel that the world's, and I shouldn't say the world's coming to an end because it's not as serious as that, but the change in the neighborhood is coming because of these impacts of the building. Do you understand what commitment, and maybe the engineer could answer the question, what commitment is to protect the city's interest on the existing street system that is there? Are they going to be required to take care of anything? And I know I'm, you could run my clock faster if you want.
I just, I put you on for a second one. There's nobody else that's in the queue, but...
Got it.
I assume you pressed your button a second time.
How do we protect the city's interest on the roadways?
One, one of the things that we do is if the contractor is carrying equipment in and out of the project, we go ahead and videotape the state of the streets, verify its condition, and then after their construction's done, if we see damage that's been caused by the contractor, the developer, we require them to go back and make those repairs.
How many have we required them to fix in your time? And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you to introduce yourself.
I'm Greg Vandergrift with Central District. We've had, I, I can think of about four projects where we've had to have people go back and make repairs.
It's not a whole lot.
No, it's not a lot.
There's more pothels out there than four, you know, caused by that. But anyway, I think I've made my point. Maybe we get some help from the discussion and maybe the counselors could come up with an idea. Would you like to do an EIR, a voluntary EIR?
No, but I do want to let you know, Councilman, all the issues you just raised within the red area, that's the full 110 acres, were fully analyzed in the EIR back in the 90s when it was done. And everything you raised, including the slope stability, what would happen off-site off the track where the grading was, all in that EIR, which was certified by the council and approved.
1990?
1993. And then in 2004, you voted to approve this track with a certified EIR. So you've taken actions leading this developer to go forward, but everything within the red has been analyzed in that EIR, and your staff reports, which have come in the last six months, have all confirmed that.
Very well. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Mr. President, I believe there's nothing on the table since the item came to us as a report from Plum with no action. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We just have before us right now the, the further EIR would be required.
Okay. Well, there's no recommendation from, from Plum?
No, they came without recommendation.
Okay. One final question. I mentioned it was a two-pronged process. One is whether there's a required discretionary approval or not. The other is whether the, what the, the expanded grading area, the additional lots and other issues, would that reach the threshold of a supplemental EIR? I'm trying to understand that because if we, let's say we do, let's say we do have a discretionary approval. The second test is, has there been significant new information or changes to the project? Can you go through that analysis with, for us, please?
Yes, Hadar Plafkin, LA City Planning and Environmental Section. It's our contention that the off-site improvements that are required by the original EIR, that since they were required by the original EIR, they're part of that analysis, it's not really considered new information. It was known that at the time the EIR was done, that Pueblo Avenue would need to be improved and the slope below it stabilized in order to be able to build the subdivision above it.
And was that analyzed in the original EIR?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we closed the public comment. If somebody directs questions, you may, but otherwise, no.
You can go speak again?
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Weezer?
Mr. Lavange has a question, then I'll make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Lavange?
Madam City Attorney, because if the 1993 EIR, is there a statute of limitations on EIRs?
Yes. The longest period of time that there is to challenge an EIR is six months from whenever the approval occurred.
No, but I mean, if I get one in 1993, an EIR, that's like 14 years ago. That's 14 years is...
That's way past the statute of limitations. 13 and a half years.
Not to challenge it, but how long is it good for?
It depends on how much factually has changed. As a general rule, when an EIR is that long ago, you can assume things have changed, and you would look at them again to see if in fact they have.
So Mr. Planning Officer has looked at it and says this 14-year-old document is still good?
Well, keep in mind, it's from the time the EIR was done to the time the track was approved, which was actually within one year.
See, I want to hear you say "good." See, this is the question I want to ask. I tried the same thing from the counselor, and now I'm asking you. Is it a good EIR? Could you stand up there? Could you go to a, what's the neighborhood school in that area? Could you go to that neighborhood school, to the meeting, and tell the people there that this is a good EIR? Could you put your name as a certified city planner, and forgive me, your full name?
Hadar Plafkin.
Hi, Hadar. I'm sorry we haven't had a chance to meet, but could you get up there and say, "This is a good, this is a certified document and up to date"?
It's not an example I would bring to a school, but it is a certified EIR, and it was never challenged at the time it was done. And the approvals were done almost immediately, immediately after. If it were, if it were to come before you today, if you were to come with no approvals at all, you might ask for additional information.
Right.
But because it's a recorded tract, it makes it very, very difficult under the Subdivision Map Act to say you now have to go back 13, 14 years.
Yeah, I just, see, I'm going back in my mind of Garth Hathaway, which is up across the 13th, you know, when they transform that. It is a transformation for a neighborhood to go through these experiences. That's why I like full EIR, even though some people don't like to do full EIR because they feel it impedes them from reaching their goal. Their goal is admirable to build housing, but at the same time, these people live in the neighborhood, and that's why we try to have the planning department protect people as best as possible under the advice of the city attorney. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange, and back to Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a very difficult and arduous process. Again, I want to thank the planning department, the city attorney's office. A lot of time and energy has been spent on this. We postponed this a number of times in Plum, in City Council, in Plum. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we, I don't know the correct language, but that we request, instruct, that we require a supplemental environment impact report on this project.
Okay. The motion is before us. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second? So that is before us. We have nobody else on the speaker queue, just to be clear, folks. There's no recommendation we're voting on out of Plum. The only thing we're voting on is the motion that has now been moved by Mr. Weezer to instruct that there be a supplemental or, well, the language does not say supplemental here, but, Mr. Weezer, are you on supplemental EIR? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
I made a motion. Which motion would be voted upon first? Mine or Mr. Weezer?
Motion's go in reverse order. So last one comes first.
All right, well, I, I would make a motion then to follow the recommendation of the city attorney here, which is...
Can we have that specifically from the city attorney?
Yes.
One more time so folks know what they're voting on?
There was one motion on the floor now that we already seconded, though. So let's vote on that motion, and then if not, we vote on your motion.
But I think it would be better to do it this way.
Procedurally?
Yeah, I think it would be better.
You'll vote on his motion after you vote on your motion.
The way we would do it, folks, is in reverse order. If they're, after we have clarified what the motion is, if there's a second, that comes...
Yeah, that's fine. I'll withdraw that. I mean, that would be my...
Mr. Weiss withdraws. So we have just that motion. This requires...
I'm just trying to do it to...
Eight votes. A yes vote is to instruct for the EIR, a no vote is to not. Is that clear? Any other questions procedurally, Mr. Zine?
I have one technical. The EIR that was approved, what year was that done?
It was completed in 1992.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.